Thank you. We'll take up that recommendation, but we do have a card, so we'll call that special. And now we will go to our general public comment. This is for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city. I will go first to Van Nuys, and Sean Murphy is our first speaker. Good morning, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, good morning. Yeah, good morning, ma'am. Good morning, Mr. President, City Council. I'm sorry I wasn't here yesterday due to the rain. Uh, uh, I want to speak on the commissioner appointment too, so, uh, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfonso Hernandez will be our next speaker here in Council Chambers. Good morning, Mr. Hernandez, and after that will be Arnold Sacks.
Yes, good morning, everybody. I'd like to address this to my City Councilman Representative, Ed Reyes. I have a question, and I have a comment. I've been trying to get an appointment with you for the last month through your office, especially through Lisa, and so far I haven't... I don't get return calls or anything. I leave voice messages. Nothing's done, and I've been trying since August 17th dealing with your office in North Broadway to resolve this matter. I was given a ticket. My vehicle was towed when they were doing the slurry. The sign where I parked my vehicle clearly said that they were going to do that section on Tuesday. This is on Pepper Street. They were going to do that section on Tuesday. The lower section from the alley south, they were going to do it on Friday, the 17th. My vehicle was towed on August 13th, Good Luck Day, and I've been trying to get this resolved. So far, I haven't had any luck. All I need is five minutes of your time, and I can show you the pictures, and maybe you can resolve this.
My understanding is my staff has been working with you. They did get the pictures. They did get your responses, and so, obviously, you need more satisfaction, and I'll continue to work with you.
I only need a phone call. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll set that up, and we'll make that happen right now. Thank you very much for being here, sir. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After Mr. Sacks, we'll go back to Van Nuys, and Candido Maris will be our following speaker. Mr. Sacks.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I don't know. You might have all caught the mayor's press conference regarding the inroads the city is making on the pension reform. Just what you need to hear. Leadership that was absent during the budget crisis is going to now reform pension. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Gruel, the CIO, where were you to help save the city the $26 million that just frittered away on pay raises instead of raising the ceiling on the EIP retirements? We still don't know how many people were laid off from that budget crisis. We're still waiting from the Budget and Finance Committee to give us a number. Most important item on your agenda today was Item 15, which was the report on the last quarter of last year's budget. Why? Because that item, from March till June, in March, the city was bankrupt. At the end of the fiscal year, you had $181 million saved. Bankruptcy to $181 million, faster than a speeding bullet. Everybody running around, "We got 300 layoffs. We got 500 layoffs. We got 700 layoffs. We got 1,000 layoffs. We got 4,000 layoffs." How many people did you lay off that cost the city $26 million? If you need to get an idea, when you go to the library and you find that it's closed, just remember that they got a pay raise for the city family to close those libraries. And these are the same people that are going to dive in and solve the retirement benefit fiasco that was created by government. It's amazing. What a... It's like chasing your tail.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, for your comments. Van Nuys, City Council Chambers, and Candido Maris is our next speaker. After that, we'll come back, and Noel Weiss will follow.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. President, Commissioner, excuse me, council members. I apologize for my slowness today. I want to speak about yesterday's DWP Board of Water and Power Commissioner meeting. One of the items was Item 7, and it concerned corporate land insurance. And thank God for the new commissioner, Ms. Newman. She was able to ask questions, and after the questions were asked, we could... It was very clear that the Department of Water and Power does not have a contract committee to look at these contracts. She was very salient in her questions, and the fact was is that if had she not asked those questions, this item would have been passed, and again, dollars would have been wasted. My question to you, Mr. Rosenthal and Ms. Hahn, and you don't have to answer, but the Department of Airports, do they have a contract committee? Does the Department of Harbor, Ms. Hahn, do they have a contracts committee? I believe they do. Why is it that the Department of Water and Power continues to not have a contract committee? Mr. Pastoris and Mr. Nahai, when they were there, they had it. Again, $1.4 billion spent of the taxpayers' money, and we don't know where it goes. We don't know what contracts they go to. So I would ask that this council, again, check into that. Yesterday, we heard from a lawyer, Ms. Pat Berry, who represented Sandra Miranda. For those of you who don't remember, she's the one that exposed a contract in 2004 and who's been tortured and humiliated. The questions that were asked of her, someone said to me yesterday, "It was like living in the 1950s when women were treated like second-class citizens." To think that a woman would be asked that... I bet you those questions weren't asked of the men that... who had filed complaints against the Department of Water and Power. When she came to you in 2004, she said she felt like she had been raped by the department, and yet here we are in 2010, and that rape continues, and nobody does anything. Nobody does anything.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Mr. Labange, briefly.
Six and eight, Mr. Clerk. What did I say to you, Mr. Clerk?
Number six, we sent forthwith, and ten passed?
Yeah.
Six, eight, and ten, sir, is what you had inquired about.
Fourth with.
Thank you. Noel Weiss is our next speaker. After that, will be Rick Knight and Gail back in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Weiss.
Good morning, Council. Three things. One, yesterday, again, I renewed the call for a... the city attorney as well as the city council to call for a moratorium on the foreclosures initiated by the banks against middle class and the lower-middle class. There's more there that meets the eye. We need a public discussion. The city attorney needs to do what he said he was going to do, which is represent the people and enforce the law. The law in California is not being enforced with regard to that issue, and I'm talking about a civil suit by the city attorney. Secondly, with regard to the council's failure to abide by its own rules, specifically Rules 26, 27, and 28, again, I call upon the city attorney to enforce those rules. Those rules say that no member of this body can be considered present unless within the four corners of the chamber, and that rule is not being enforced. And again, I think this is an example, by the way, of what I'm hoping Newt meant when he said that he was the attorney for the people, because we're not talking policy here. We're not talking attorney-client privilege. Attorneys are two types: one that is a mouthpiece for the client, and one that tells the client sometimes what the client doesn't want to hear. This is a public trust. You're all sitting as public trustees. We, the people, are the beneficiaries of that trust. There's tons of law that say an attorney for a trust also owes duties to the beneficiary. At some point in time, hope springs eternal. One of you is going to stand up and say, "You know, I call for a quorum call," and that means an oral request, and in order to answer that, you've got to be in the chamber. There's no excuse. If you want to change the rules, feel free to do so. Lastly, I'm still looking for a Rule 54 from two members of this body on my SB 1818 data. This SB 1818, it is a speculator's paradise. It's the last bastion of speculation that's going on in this city, and that means we have a little cottage industry going around, and with Gail Goldberg going rogue, but basically a little cottage industry to acquire these SB 1818 properties and flip them. It's happening in Mr. Caress's district in Westwood. There's a couple other projects going, and you know what? We need the data. How much affordable housing is being created versus how much is being destroyed? Mr. Reyes is sitting on it. This council ordered it two years ago. Please, somebody stand up and ask for this information and get these motions going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And just briefly, we not infrequently do call for quorum calls, and we have sergeants-at-arms, city clerks, and council members who monitor, but as long as I'm chair, I will allow folks to go to the bathroom, which is outside the four corners here. Rick Knight and Gail is our last speaker in Van Nuys City Council Chambers. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Rick Knight. I want to thank you for listening to Candido before there. I hope you guys vote. I'm telling you to vote on no on 21, because you're just going to take the fees. They say they're going to drop the fees going into the parks, so we're going to put it on the license plates, so everybody that owns a car is going to have to pay another $18, and you won't have to pay to go in the park. Well, you know that's a lie, because they'll come back and put the fees on, because they won't have enough money. Hope you vote yes on 26, because that's a fee tax. They're putting another fee tax. That's exactly what they did on this trash thing. So that's a big lie. So that's a yes on that one. And no on 25, because this two-thirds vote, I'll tell you, if they can get down to the majority, that'd be 51%, they can pass anything they want. Like I said, you people didn't like Schwarzenegger. He tried, what, two, three years ago to get these pensions taken care of, and they cried that you were going to turn around and take money from the pensions of the women and so forth. And so, he tried, and if that wouldn't have gone through on a majority, we would have lost it. I'm telling you right now, you've got to get rid of that. In 19, marijuana, I lost my best guns. Somebody getting loaded at 8 o'clock in the morning and killed him. He just flat retired. Spent his whole life working, and then some idiot had to be on marijuana and crashed him and killed him. I'll tell you, it's just unbelievable. You've got to get out and vote. You cannot let Brown get in. You cannot let Brown get in. He is for all the unions. He is a puppet. He's been that way for years and years and years, and he is not going to change. And you people need jobs, and there are only two people that have gotten up there and says, "I can bring you jobs." They are established people that have know-how to get people working, and that's Meg Whitman and Carly Afri.
Mr. President, the governor's race and Senate race are not within jurisdiction. Thank you. We have to make sure we're in the jurisdiction of the city and the city election, so if you could bring it back to that. You have eight seconds left, sir.
You've got to be foolish if you don't believe that.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your public comments. We just have to be careful with state law for our elections. And with that, we will go to items that have been called special. We've had a request to take Items 26, 27, and 28 out of order. We do have cards on these items, so why don't we go ahead and take them together? We'll also take the cards together, and then Mr. Cardenas, as Chair of the Board of Referring Powers, will recognize you. But first, let's hear from Dale Cochran. Is Dale in the chamber? She's coming second. Okay. Darrell Benton. Come on down. Oh, I am very sorry. We had a late addition to our public comment, and my apologies. We're going to take one more general public comment. If you just want to sit down right there, Mr. Walter Bechtel for general public comment. My apologies, Mr. Bechtel. I missed that. That was my mistake. Go ahead, please.
Okay. I wanted to say something, because this has to do with the Ford Hotel again and relocation. I filed an appeal with the CRA and Ms. Carol Chiaodoe. She's supposed to... I filed it last month. She is supposed to answer my appeal, not the HUD people. I would appreciate somebody direct her to answer my appeal. My appeal was not a complaint to the HUD people. I directed that letter to her, and I have evidence that she received the letter. I sent it certified mail. I am appealing the calculation of our benefits. We were permanently relocated from the Ford Hotel according to HUD rules and regulations. We fall under 104D according to their own pamphlet dated October 2008. If it is a permanent relocation and it's a reconfiguration of the property, and the original rents of the properties do not exceed FMR, which we did not, we were way below FMR. That's why our benefits were calculated. We're supposed to get 60 months of relocation benefits, and there are other problems, but this is just one thing, and I would appreciate it if the city would instruct to Ms. Carol Chiaodoe at CRA to answer my appeal. Only she is entitled to answer that. I can file that as a complaint somewhere else, but I wanted to come in here and say something. Thank you. Okay?
Thank you very much. We'll now go back to Items 26, 27, 28. We had closed... His had come in before the deadline of when we'd closed it, sir, so there's other comments that you can make on other items, but thank you for that. Dale Cochran is our first speaker. After that, will be Darrell Benton.
Mr. President, on behalf of the cards that were submitted from the Hudson Magic Johnson Group, we waive our right to speak. Thank you.
All righty. We will go with into Van Nuys. Sean Murphy will be our next speaker on Item 27. Good morning again, Mr. Murphy.
Good morning again, Mr. President. I support this item. It's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. It's very impressive to have all these people in here to discuss these contracts at the airport. My concern with the airport, first of all, A, the budget with the remodeling is totally out of line. Nobody's really discussed that. B, we have the concession stand for the taxi holding company. That's not appearing anywhere. When is that going to be settled? When is... One of these attorneys would step up and say, "Hey, you know what? You can't have a private company take public property and lease that land to a third property, to a third company, without the public getting some kind of remittance." That's what's happening at the airport, and you're going to make decisions based on these contracts. Step up, and... While you're at it with the airport, please explain. You had the contract with the travelers' aid. How can you lose volunteers and save money at the same time? Please explain that to the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Robin Rodriguez is our next speaker, and after that will be Ricardo Barahona. Thank you.
Ricardo Barahona is actually going to go first.
Okay. Good morning.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Ricardo Barahona.
Momentito por transacción. We have somebody. It's okay. We'll do it officially, just to make sure it's in the record. Thank you, though. Continua. Gracias.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Ricardo Barahona.
Good morning. My name is Ricardo Barahona.
Yo soy un lead cook de la terminal 72 para la compañía Delaware North.
I am a lead cook, Terminal 7, for the Delaware North Company.
Por 15 años he trabajado en el aeropuerto.
I've been working at the airport for 15 years.
Pero solo en esos 10 años he tenido el privilegio de ser miembro de United HRE Local 11.
But only for 10 of those years, I had the privilege to be a member of United here Local 11.
Y por eso es que estoy aquí hoy.
And that's why I am here today.
Yo y mis compañeros tuvimos que luchar casi cinco años para ganar respeto y beneficios.
My coworkers and myself, we had to fight for five years in order to have... get respect and benefits and good salaries.
And sueldos dignos.
And fair salaries.
Incluso ahora seguimos buscando un estándar de vida mejor.
Even now, we are trying to get a better standard of life.
Por eso aunque entiendo que debe haber cambios en el aeropuerto.
Even though I understand that there should be changes at the airport.
A nosotros no queremos que ningún empleado en el aeropuerto pierda beneficios.
We don't want that any employee at the airport loses their benefits.
Derecho señoría o respeto a causa de esto.
The rights or seniority due to this.
Ni que tenga que luchar más de cinco años o más.
We don't want them to fight for five more years.
Como yo y otras personas lo han hecho durante mucho tiempo.
As I had to fight, and other people had to fight for a long time.
Por eso necesitamos su compromiso para ir adelante y no hacia atrás.
And that's why we need your commitment to go forward and not go backwards. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Robin Rodriguez, and I'm an organizing director with United here Local 11. Our union represents the close to 2,000 food service and retail workers who serve the traveling public at LAX day in and day out. These men and women are the linchpin to the success of the companies that you select to do business at the airport. They're the first to greet visitors to our city and the last to send them on the way back home. Their years of experience, their commitment to customer service, and their desire to upgrade the offerings at LAX is critical to the successful transformation of the airport. We believe that everyone can benefit from change at LAX: the traveling public and our city's tourism industry, concessions workers and their families, and the companies selected to carry out the work. We are here simply to remind you that we expect the companies you approve today to uphold the union standards that enable thousands of LA families to live with the security of free family medical insurance, decent yearly wage increases, and respect and dignity on the job. Our job standards well exceed the minimum set by city ordinances. They contribute to the health of our city's economy, and we're committed to maintaining and strengthening them with all companies that come into LAX over the next several years. We call on you as our elected officials to remain engaged beyond today's approvals and beyond the many approvals that will come to help ensure that workers too move forward here at LAX. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. That will close our public comments on those three items. I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas, who is the Chair of the Board of Referring Powers. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. The Board of Referring Powers has had this matter for just over two months, yet at the same time, there's been a lot of consternation and rush to hurry up and get this done, even though this process began pretty much in the latter part of 2008. So what I want to remind us, members, is that bad policy tends to be done in a rush, and I think it's important for us to understand that we got elected, we were elected, we are elected officials, to make sure that the processes are fair and appropriate, that they follow all of the legal responsibilities, and that we make sure that our staffs and our city departments are upholding their legal responsibilities and their fiduciary responsibilities to the owners, in this case, of the LAX Airport. What's before us is the majority of the concessions that are provided at our international airport, otherwise known as LAX. I want to give you my perspective as the chairman of the Board of Referring Powers. I appreciate that responsibility that I have, Mr. President, and I take it very seriously. I believe that the Board of Referring Powers did the basic bare minimum of adhering to our responsibilities of hearing protests. There were many, many protests that were forwarded in this process. We listened to those protests at the minimum requirement, and then the Board of Referring Powers as a whole proceeded to make motions and pass the decisions on to the full council. One of the reasons why I was the only registered no vote in that Board of Referring Powers is because I believe that we did not cover, in the full view of the public, the responsibility of making sure that this process was fair, that it was equitable, and that it followed the law, and also followed all of the fiduciary responsibilities that we should all adhere to in any RFP process. What we're talking about here is over $100 million of cash register receipts annually for potential agreements with several winning bidders that are at least 20 years. So what we're talking about here is a lot of money. What we're talking about here is a lot of bidders who are interested in serving the public, but at the same time, regardless of the fact that our airport hasn't had a major renovation since the 1984 Olympics, regardless of the fact that some of the food is fast food and some of it might seem a little stale and outdated, the fact of the matter is, to me, that is a secondary matter compared to whether or not we are handling this process legally and appropriately and responsibly. So what I want to point out to the full council is that, first of all, I was not satisfied with the fact that the evaluating committee was made up of completely internal LA World Airport staff. There were no external evaluators. Also, every single one of those evaluators reports to one person, and also, a very high-ranking person of the evaluators, outside of being an evaluator, every single person in that evaluation committee actually reports to that person, and that person was on the evaluating committee. Think about that. Those of you who work in any structure of responsibility where you have actually a matrix of who you report to, when you have the person that everybody reports to in one room, it's very hard to say, "Excuse me, boss, but I disagree." It's very hard to say, "Excuse me, boss, but why are you asking us to do something a certain way when I have other questions?" People tend to say, "I see the writing on the wall. After this evaluation process is over, that person's still my boss, so maybe I'll just go along to get along." That's something that I didn't understand, even understand why Lawa did that, but at the same time, what we have here, and we discussed this at the Board of Referring Powers, is on May 29, 2008, our then controller, Laura Chick, actually reported to the City of Los Angeles policymakers that she made recommendations, and some of the recommendations were, "Please make sure that people take notes in the valuation processes. Please do so." And during the Board of Referring Powers, it was confirmed, and the truth came out, that the notes that were taken, the vast majority of notes that were taken, were actually destroyed. Now, if those notes had not been destroyed, they would have eventually been part of the public record that the Board of Referring Powers could have reviewed, we all could have reviewed, and also could have been subpoenaed in case there are any lawsuits. But those records were destroyed, inconsistent with the recommendation and the agreement that Lawa had with our then controller that they would adhere to her recommendations. And in this particular process, they did not adhere to those recommendations. That's just a couple of things that I'll point out. We're only limited to an opening remark as a chairman of the Board of Referring Powers to six minutes, so in my last 30 seconds, I just want to say, when we adjourned the Board of Referring Powers, I voted no, because I believed that we did not vet the process. We did not ask all of the questions, or not even anywhere near the number of questions or the number of issues that the Board of Referring Powers should have contemplated. There seemed to be an artificial rush to just say, "Let's get this over with." And with all due respect, that was actually said on the microphone in view of the full public, that we need to hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. And here we are, ladies and gentlemen, with a hurried process that was incomplete, and in my recommendation, we should vote down what the Board of Referring Powers did, send it back to Lawa, so we can get this done right, because it's disrespectful for any RFP process to be inconsistent, just with too many inconsistencies, and also with processes that cannot be upheld in the court of law. And I believe that if we continue today, we're probably going to have a lawsuit. Who knows? Maybe 50/50, it gets thrown out. But at the same time, I think that there's plenty of room for there to be a lawsuit successfully, at least on some of the packages, if not all. Thank you, and I'll push my button again.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And while I totally respect Councilmember Cardenas, who, by the way, I think did an excellent job as Chair of the Board of Referring Powers, I have a little bit of a different take on this. And as you remember, the reason it came to the Board of Referring Powers is because there was a conflict with one of the members of the Airport Commission, and that's why the Board of Powers exists. I actually have had this item in my Trade and Commerce Committee for probably three years. We've held many hearings in my committee, talking about the need to revitalize the concessions out at LAX. When we're talking about spending, you know, millions and millions of dollars renovating the actual physical facility of LAX, it was always my goal to revitalize the concessions. And this is nothing really against the current concessions that are out there, and I appreciate the airport workers coming here today. You airport workers really are the face of hospitality for millions of traveling passengers, and I'm always very proud of the airport workers day in and day out at LAX. I really appreciate what you do. But this was an opportunity that we haven't done in a long time, as was said, to really give a facelift to the concessions. So I'm actually glad we have these contracts before us today. I know the process was not perfect, and I think we heard that from the airport staff, but I will tell you, I think what we have before us today are contracts that will please the traveling passenger. I really believe, once we get the airport done, we're going to increase tourism here. We're going to increase passengers, but I think what we're going to offer the traveling passenger is really so much better than I think what we have there currently. And some of the things that we have before us here today are... And some of the things that we have before us here today are, we're going to have Ford's Filling Station there. The chef, by the way, is the son of Harrison Ford. We're going to have Engine Company Number 88. We're going to have Home Girl Cafe. Iron Chef Muramoto is going to be there. We're also going to have Magic Johnson Sports is going to be at the airport, which I think will be a huge draw for the traveling passenger. We're having Ed Hardy, Oakley's going to be there, and we're going to have Express Spa, which I think is going to be something that the traveling passenger will love. This is an opportunity to take care of yourself if you have a few extra hours in the airport. When you have to take your shoes off, go through the security, and a lot of women are going to realize that, you know, they didn't get their pedicure. Well, you know, we now have an Express Spa in the airport, so on their way back, their toes will look better. I really think what we have here is a very unique, diverse variety of folks with retail and food that will have an LA flavor. We wanted Los Angeles International Airport to look like Los Angeles, and that was our goal. And I think what we have before us here is a great offering. Again, was it perfect? No. Under the advice of the city attorney, and by the way, with the agreement of Gina Marie Lindsay, we threw out the first package, which is over 50% of the deal. So we actually did take the advice of the city attorney, we did take the advice of Gina Marie Lindsay, and we threw that out. We're going to go forward now and look to rebid that in the future. And I believe the lessons that we learned through this first phase will improve the process as we go forward. We're still going to do four more terminals, plus Tom Bradley, so I think we learned some good lessons. You know, again, we got human beings involved in every aspect of the City of Los Angeles. And I really respect Tony Cardenas. And any of you who have ever been in a committee that Tony chairs, you will know that he is thorough, he is deliberate, he is cautious, and he really does take the idea of vetting something to a whole new level. But I do believe that we had a responsibility to move this forward. I think we have a responsibility to the traveling passenger to finally get this first phase done. We'll be offering things that I believe we'll be very proud of. So I would urge us to approve what we have before us today. Again, give encouragement to the airport, to the staff, that as we move forward, we will change the way we did some things, we'll look at the actual evaluators in a different way, and I think we have some suggestions that I believe the airport staff will take to heart as we move forward. This is a good day. I have been waiting for this day for a very long time. It's been a goal of mine to really energize that airport in a number of ways, and I think what we have here today is a good start.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. You look great in that scarf, by the way. It looks like an aviator, like Amelia Earhart, so it's a fitting outfit for today. Don't ask that question. There are three people to thank. Both you and Mr. Cardenas as Chairs, both of the Board of Referring Powers and TCT Committee that have been working on the airport in this particular way and for a long time, and most importantly, Mr. Rosendahl, whose district this is in, who I think, together with this entire council, have felt what the public and the traveling public feel, which is that things have to change at LAX. And Gina Marie Lindsay and her team who have been brought in, I think, share that philosophy and that sense of urgency. And so what we have today is a collision of that sense of urgency and how bad things are with wanting to get things right, making sure that process works and that it's fair. 25 years ago, if you want to think back that far, or 26 years ago, Mr. LeBonds, what was happening in the city? Olympic Games, that's right. We had a brand-new Tom Bradley International Terminal that was the envy of the world. We had an airport that was seen as one of the most efficient anywhere, certainly a place that people came to because you could get in and out of that airport quickly. It was a convenient place. It was a place that was cutting-edge. Today, as we know, LAX is quite the opposite. It's a place in which passengers are scared to go. Friends I know are sometimes wondering about whether the bathrooms are clean, whether the concessions are up to date and as cutting-edge as they want to be, and it's a place in which it's very difficult to get in and out. And that's not been because folks in mayor's offices and city councils and airport commissions haven't talked about change, but for whatever reason, LA is so good at getting to no, and we're so bad at getting to yes. The neighborhood gets ignored, or folks that are on the, workers get ignored and get trampled over on their right sometimes. We see our inability to do things. But today, we take, I would say, a quarter step forward. This is about 25% of what we need to do to make sure that the passenger, which is really what this should be about, the passenger and the community, are finally respected. So it is an exciting day, Ms. Hahn. When you look at who we will be able to dine at, we've had some great folks that are returning, and we have a lot of new folks that are returning, but right now, we need an airport that produces more revenue. We need an airport that produces more convenience. We need an airport that shows off this amazing city better. Lots of times here in that airport, and you could be anywhere. And it's complicated, because just like the way we set up our governance in the Southland, where we have 88 cities and a county and 20-something levels of government, we almost set up the airport that way, too. And I don't think any of us did it, but some of the terminals are controlled privately, some of it's done publicly, some of it is under our purview, and some of it really needs to be brought together so that we can coherently move the airport as a single organism forward. I'm disappointed that we won't be moving forward on Package 1. I think it's the right decision. We had that advice, but I didn't get involved after the bids were out with any of the particulars, but there are some great coffeehouses and companies and restaurants, some of which are in my district, who have done an amazing job, which would have been a great showcase of LA, and it's a pity that the right steps weren't made so that that could happen here today. But the ones that are moving forward, which represent the diversity of this city, which represent the history of this city, great names from, you know, Magic Johnson to Romans to Ford's Filling Station, some of the many things that we're going to see, people will get a sense of where they are. They're in the best city in the world. They should be in the best airport in the world, too. So I urge all of you, as we move forward, to make sure, I think, the Board of Airport Commissioners learn their lesson from this, and hopefully Lawa did as well. I hope we have as well, but I'd rather err on the side of urgency. As long as we have enough of a sign-off that this has been done right, let's finally get an airport that when people get there, they go, "I am so excited to be in LA, starting from the moment I walk off that plane," not two hours later when they arrive at their destination. And in doing that, we will ensure that we have an economic engine and jobs for a long time. And to the workers, I know Mr. Parks is going to say something on this as well, but worker retention is critical to us. We know that, we have fought for that, we will ensure that that moves forward, and we will make sure that workers are treated with respect and continue delivering the sort of service we come to expect in a world-class airport in a city like Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank Gina Marie. You basically took over a process that was there well before you got there. You brought it to a conclusion. I want to thank Kelly Martin and Pete Etcheverria from the City Attorney's Office, and Mike Molina, who basically ran interference for all that. But having watched this process ebb and flow for the last five or six years, I think it is a good day that we're moving forward. And I think, having seen several hundred RFPs in my lifetime, none of them are perfect. And I was talking to the President here that if we could just get rid of people and democracy, everything would be smooth, but we can't do that. So the issue is--
Nor do we want to.
But the issue is, we cured every issue that was of concern. The things that were sent back, I'm sure there'll be issues that would be done differently, but each and every vote, in my judgment, cured what were the concerns brought up by the City Attorney's Office. So I do not want to leave any impression to the public that any of these vendors, whether they were retained or they're new, are basically sliding through the process. And I am very enthused about the fact that some of the vendors took on their own responsibility to make local businesses a partner with them, not just a name, but a partner as it relates to their business. And so I think as we move forward, again, for the workers, the worker retention ordinance, I believe satisfies your concerns, and certainly the council has been clear as to that implementation. In fact, just recently, the council increased the dollar value of your salary for medical insurance, and so these are things that should be ever-present on your mind. But I just wanted to stand and say that I'm going to vote for this, voted for it at the Board of Referring Powers, and we hope that the next process can be handled by the board and we not have conflicts, because that is a significant amount of time, in the sense of the Board of Referring Powers. And I just would like to save about 6 million trees from them sending paperwork after paperwork expressing their different views. And so if it could be done at the commission, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've been carrying this homeboy's cup since I've been on this council, because it means jobs, and Father Greg Boyle is an incredible contributor to our society, but we're going to see homegirls at the airport, and that's part of the group that Father Greg Boyle has put together. You're going to see local partners participating in the profit end. It's just not window dressing, but real local partners. Look, modernization, yes; expansion, no. That's been my motto of LAX since I've been in office for five years. It's been an embarrassment coming to our airport from all over the planet. We're the number-one destination airport in the world, and that's because we have 25 million of us from all over the planet that live here, and the connection to the planet is awesome here. So we'll always be the number-one destination point airport in the planet. And to enhance that, we need to modernize. It has not been dealt with since 1984, as Mr. LeBonds was saying, since the Olympics and Tom Bradley. We even have one of the terminals named after Tom Bradley, the Tom Bradley Terminal, which is being modernized right now, and we hope by '12, '12, '12, to have that airport completely modernized and the Bradley Terminal as the first phase. There is $10 billion worth of modernization going on. The biggest public works project in the entire region here is happening there. So what are we doing today? We're approving the improvement of LAX. That's what's going to happen. It will be partially improved. There'll be more to be done. We hope that the commission that oversees the airport can do the rest of it, but it will eventually come back to us for final approval. But just to mention a couple of the groups, when we vote yes today, we'll be bringing in the Home Girl Cafe, the Wolfgang Puck, I Love LA, Engine Company 28, Masahara Muramoto, and Fred's Filling Station. These are well-known local groups that will be partners with the overall strategy going forward. So this is a good day for the City of Los Angeles. I've learned one thing in politics: patience you got to have. We've been at this for three or four years, and we're about to approve part of it. We'll be back again to approve the rest of it. I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. LeBonds.
Thank you very much. This city has had great development over time. In the 1920s, in the advent of the 32 Games, the city rose high in American Beautiful Movement and built many great things. Three things built the city: the Port of Los Angeles, and Phineas Valley, a man-made port, the airport, and Mulholland and the water. And that's why I bring this up, because if we give these out, I don't want to see you charge $7 for a bottle of water. I want to see if we can work something out. Mr. City Attorney, I want you to listen to me, please. Is it possible that we could add in here that the Department of Water Power could make available, at a reasonable price, water that would be competitive to the water that they sell for many, many, many dollars, that could get to the people? Because I always say, "I want a safe airport, number one."
The answer is no.
Why not?
There's none on the agenda.
I understand that. So I would say, members, I think we should look at it. What people want when they go through the airport is safety. What they want is quick, and they want to get to where they go, but when they're in between flights, which we are a gateway to the world, they want to have comfort. So this provides comfort, and I'm proud of those who are providing that. But I will bring that up, Mr. City Attorney, again, even though you may not like it, because I think it should be something that would be reasonable. And I just say that to those who are in that business, to look at it, because I think it helps, and if it's our water, it's a good thing, because we're all talking about local people. And it is very important, as we look to what we did under Tom Bradley's administration and those who sat in our chairs, that did modernize the game that welcomed the world in '84. Now, as we look forward to the future, we could welcome the world again with a place that will inspire people on how great Los Angeles is. Thank you very much.
Mr. LeBonds, do you want to amend the contract to add that addition?
Well, the city attorney said I couldn't do it, so I don't want to do it, but I do like to get the city attorney upset--
I know you do.
--by making him smile.
I know you're stirring the pot. It's good.
But we should do this, members. We should. We have great water.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonds. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I appreciate some of the accuracy that my colleague, Councilmember Parks, pointed out that occurred in the Board of Referring Powers. You're absolutely right. To a certain degree, we adhere to some of our minimum responsibilities, but certain things never really came about and we didn't get clear answers to in the Board of Referring Powers. And I'll bring one glaring example, just one, of many. And one of them is, when the scoring committee, the scoring panel, actually scored the RFPs, and there were dozens of scores given out, various categories, one of the categories is quite important, especially when you're talking about a vendor that's participating in a portion of over $100 million of receipts each year, year after year, and that is the category of financials. And some of the bidders actually received a perfect score on their financials. That's not a problem. However, in certain cases, it is glaringly obvious that certain financial information was not complete and/or available to the scorers. And then after the scores were made and completed and tallied, after that, the staff went and checked some of the references, including the financials, and as a result of those references, some of those references came back very much less than perfect. Yet, some of those scores, and in this case, perfect score on financials, remained exactly the same without being adjusted. So that begs the question: Was there potentially, possibly, a predetermined outcome? Because why would you ask somebody to submit something as important as financials if you're going to score them with incomplete information, and then when you get the complete information, and the complete information is less than perfect, and they remain with a perfect score, that raises a red flag, whether it's an RFP process or any process where it's supposed to be fair, honorable, and something that should be able to pass scrutiny? And ladies and gentlemen, that does not pass scrutiny. And we did not afford ourselves, as the Board of Referring Powers, to dig into examples like that and get the answers on the record. We got some tertiary answers, but we didn't get detailed answers, and then we moved on. I heard a lot about how important it is, and I agree. Everybody who comes to our LAX should get a world-class experience. Yet at the same time, with all due respect, colleagues, we were not elected to office to focus on that. We were elected to office to focus on our responsibilities, which is a legislative responsibility, and our vote should be adhered to what exactly is before us. Not what's glitzy, not what's glamorous, whether it's Wolfgang Puck or whether it's Eva Longoria, those are two of the bidders, or, excuse me, subsets of some of the bidders. It's not a matter of how sexy somebody might look, or whether or not we give them pedicures or not, or the opportunity thereof. It's really not about that at this moment. What it's really about is, is this process fair and appropriate and legal? That's what's before us, ladies and gentlemen. So thank you very much, Mr. Parks, for accurately portraying the truth. Some of the things were vetted, but too many of the things that we should have vetted in the Board of Referring Powers did not get done. It's now before us for a final vote. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, please, for the sake of fairness and responsibility to the bidders, to the traveling public, and to democracy, please vote no.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I was going to ask Gina Marie Lindsay if she'd like to come forward.
We were almost out of here. Needs to be another hour now.
And one of the things I would like for you to comment on is maybe this Package 1 and what happens now, because I think there was a lot of interest, obviously, in this Package 1. I know many of us thought maybe 50% was too much for one package, and we even suggested maybe making it smaller, or is this going to be part of the developer model, or are we going to do a new RFP? Maybe you could tell us a timeline and what your thinking is on how we look at this Package 1.
Yes, thank you. Gina Marie Lindsay, Executive Director of L.A. World Airports. We have taken to heart some of the comments and observations that the Board of Referring Powers shared with us. We have an RFP that will be coming out tomorrow--
Oh.
--for a repackaged Package 1, which has now become three opportunities, and it'll hit the street tomorrow.
Great, so you're doing a new R-- that's, you know, I mean, I think that's good news, because I think we thought it was going to be a longer process for that Package 1. So you're putting an RFP out tomorrow on the street, you're breaking it up, so it will be three packages, and everyone's welcome to bid. Any thoughts on lessons learned, on how we might evaluate the bidders this-- Any thoughts on lessons learned on how we might evaluate the bidders this time around?
I think we'll use basically the same process, but with a lot more adherence to ensuring that the administrative steps get done in the right chronological order.
Was there any thoughts in terms of who were the evaluators? I know Tony and I both had concerns that kind of the makeup of the evaluator seemed to lend itself to maybe some conflicts.
Well, one of the things that I know that a couple of members of the Board of Referring Powers mentioned was some consternation about the fact that there wasn't anyone from outside the airport. We would dearly love to have folks that are outside the airport. In fact, given the fact that there's a lot of expertise available in the industry, we'd love to have folks that are from other airports. We have difficulty, though, doing that, because I think the city attorney is concerned if we do not have members that are city employees. We also have to be sure, especially after our experience this time around, to be sure that any perceived conflicts are scrubbed. And when you have folks that have worked concessions at other airports, they have obviously worked with many of the companies that would be coming in and proposing, so we have to be very careful about that. But we also want to have the best and the brightest on our staff that are doing the review and evaluation. So we are trying to put all of those puzzle pieces together in a way that gives us the best evaluation panel.
Was there a thought of, I know I had brought up a thought of maybe having, you know, in-the-city family evaluators, but maybe someone who had some food and beverage experience, like maybe from the convention center or what?
Thank you for mentioning that, because in this time around, we actually did ask several other city employees from other departments. The time commitment was such that no one could accept our opportunity, because it was, these were lots of proposals, and it took quite a lot of evaluation time. We can certainly try again, but that's the problem that we're up against.
Okay, and what is your timing on this?
We would hope to have, I don't know the specific date that we're asking for proposals to be resubmitted, but I believe it's before the end of the year.
Okay, well, I think that's important as we go forward. And again, colleagues, you know, the process wasn't perfect. There were, there was so much interest in this, and I think that was encouraging to us, that so many people from all over Los Angeles, different walks of life, different investments came to Los Angeles through this process, celebrity chefs came to this process. I think, I think before, people didn't look at LAX as really being a place that they would want to showcase food and celebrity chefs, but that really became, this became a really cool place for folks to want to be, participate in. So I think that was encouraging. We encourage everyone who is not currently, and the ones that are currently part of this package, to keep participating, keep working with this. And I think this next Package 1 will offer up more possibilities to some of the same folks and some of those who did not make it this time around. So again, I think this is a good day, colleagues. I urge you to vote yes on this. I think this is a great moment for Los Angeles and our airport.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that update, Gina Marie Lindsay. One of the things that was asked on several occasions during the Board of Referring Powers, if we rejected a portion or all of, if we rejected a portion or all of these packages, how long would it take to get back out to an RFP process, et cetera? It's very exciting to see that, in reality, you were able to really get back out there with an RFP much quicker than you anticipated in your verbal responses to the committee, because I remember it being anywhere between six months to two years, depending if we had a bunch of packages that we had to go back out on or a portion thereof. But none of the answers were as quick as the reality that you just conveyed. So I want to congratulate you on your expediency on getting back out there and getting those RFPs out there, which is much, much quicker than we heard in the committee. The only problem that I have is that caused a lot of consternation from the committee members, because, as you heard today, there seems to be a lot of focus on, let's get this place renovated. Let's get the traveling public this new, invigorated, different foods and all kinds of things going. And yet, in reality, you were able to put it out much, much quicker than you anticipated. So again, congratulations, yet at the same time, it's unfortunate that we didn't get an answer that you could get out that much quicker, because I think it may have affected some of the people's votes on the Board of Referring Powers, because I think a lot of people were afraid that we're just tired of waiting, and we didn't want to wait another six to eight months or two years. So congratulations on that. And once again, reality seems to bear out a little bit differently than the anticipation. Thank you.
Councilman, I want to be sure that I'm clear today. The difference in timing, I believe, is related to whether I'm giving you a date on when the RFP goes out on the street versus when the proposals are submitted, which we hope to have done by the end of the year. But then it will take time to evaluate those proposals and get them under contract. So that is what would be more in the six-month timeframe.
But we were mostly talking about in committee, when the question arises on several occasions, we were really referring to, how long would it take to get the RFPs out? How long would it take to go through the evaluation before you could present the proposed winners? That's really the process that we were talking about. We rather never talked about when we can actually get them in contract after we decided who the real winner was.
And I think it will be about four or five months before we will be able to be back to you with final contracts.
Yes, and then also, what occurred to me is, you gave an answer to Ms. Hahn, which is accurate, but at the same time, I don't think this was ever asked in the committee or on the floor here, and that is that, do the evaluators for separate packages, do they have to be the same evaluators? Could you have Team A evaluating these packages, because they are separate, and Evaluators B evaluating these packages, which they are separate, because those bids are not competing with each other? Correct?
Yes.
For example, in this case, you have three separate packages that people can bid on.
We could.
Is there anything wrong with that? Or is there anything incongruent with that, or something that would not make sense?
I think the issue on that is just going to be, how many people do you have, do we have, on staff that have experience with concessions? Do we have three different teams that do that?
Sure.
Probably not.
But you pointed something out that, and you pointed out consistently in the Board of Referring Powers and now, that one of the reasons it seems that some of the other city-family departments that you approached to be involved in the process was, the time commitment was very long. But if you broke it down into evaluation committees that actually could get in, do an evaluation over a number of weeks instead of months, and then be done, and then do their duty, perhaps it would open up the opportunity for more of variety of evaluators to be involved in the process.
I see your point, and I think that's a very good point.
So what I would recommend, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, that we encourage Lawa to explore that and do that, and that we see the evidence of letters that have gone out to the various departments to see if we can get a better response. Because you did ask other departments, you got a zero. They were very kind and respectful in saying, really, we can't afford the time. But if you were to break it up that way, I think that what we would get is a much better variety of evaluation, and then we could actually perhaps see something new for this city when it's possible, such as smaller packages, like you've just started to do now.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Okay, thank you. Mr. Zein, for the first time. Mr. Parks, for a second. Mr. Rosendahl still to close on the things.
Thank you, Mr. President. The food and beverage retail concessions, is this just simply the food and beverage, or is it the retail concessions, magazines, et cetera?
It is both. The items before you today include both retail and food and beverage concessions for Terminals 4, 5, 7, and 8.
Okay. Now, with the news that's come out recently, I discussed this with Councilmember Parks earlier. Magic Johnson selling Starbucks back to Starbucks, his relinquishment of the Lakers' share. Magic Johnson Enterprises is a part of this operation?
Yes, on the retail side.
On the retail side. And the only question I have, he's selling these other components that he has ownership. Does that have any impact if he gets this contract, if he then decides, once the contract is granted, to sell that to another party? Or does it then go back to the main base of that particular concession agreement? Is that a factor? Has that been considered? And I'd like to have a definite answer to that, since it's in the news as of today.
You're ahead of me. I hadn't heard that, and I want, I want to be clear.
Well, he's selling his 21 Starbucks back to Starbucks, and he's relinquished the share of the Lakers' enterprise, and you're talking about millions of dollars. My concern is, if that takes place, because oftentimes, people get the contract with the city, which makes a broader base, and then someone else buys it, they make a profit, which is a whole separate procedure. But my concern is, if we go along with this, and there's a term contract here, how does that bear upon this, since it's already been indicated that two of the operations he owns, he's relinquishing? If he gets this contract as part of this agreement, what happens with that? And are you aware of the Starbucks that just hit the news?
I was not, no.
Well, it's in the news today, he's selling his 21 Starbucks stores back to Starbucks. And my concern is, it says right here, the agreement with Hudson, Magic Johnson Enterprises. I understand Hudson's not going to be sold, he said nothing's going to be sold.
Right.
My question is, the Magic Johnson Enterprises, once they're granted that, is there a term of agreement for a certain period of time? Or can that then be granted and then sold to someone else?
Well, our expert is here. I believe the answer is, whenever that a person or an entity that has a contract with the airport sells their interest, then the airport has to consider whether they would agree to assignment to the new entity.
Or does it revert back to Hudson? That's, we need to have a technical, legal answer and a commitment if they're going to be part of this, they're going to be part of it. And is there a term of that commitment? Or does this then give an opportunity to sell? Because once you get this stronghold...
Sell the interest in the airport contract.
It's a major economic incentive for someone.
Kelly Martin, City Attorney's Office. The contract is with the joint venture, and then there's a guarantee from Hudson as the parent on the contract. So we would have to go back and look at the actual contract language. I think I have a copy here, and we'll tell you whether there's a provision in the contract that prohibits them from assigning their joint venture rights. But the joint venture continues, and Hudson continues as the guarantor.
But what if part of that venture is to be sold? What happens?
If you press your button again, Mr. Zein, your time is up.
I'm just trying to get an answer.
I'll get it.
Rules are rules, Mr. Zein.
I'm what? How can you get overruled to get an answer? So I know it's a technical issue, but I think we need to clarify that on the record so we'll know. In the event, there may be an opportunity, there may not be, but I think we need to bring it forward, at least have a clear answer to that particular aspect.
Thank you, Mr. Zein.
Okay, and just to be clear, Starbucks and Magic Johnson's interest in Starbucks is not included in any of the packages that we are recommending for award.
Well, my only concern is the second venture he's in that he's selling.
Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
I understand.
Okay. Mr. Parks? Can we get an answer to that?
We'll see if we can. All right. We can press your button again. Mr. Parks?
Kelly's looking it up.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would just ask you to look at one thing, and as Mr. Cardenas commented about the access to raiders, I think it's very limiting, and I know the city attorney's opinion, to keep that in-house to city employees. Not only is it limiting in number, it is significantly limiting in expertise. And it would appear that we need to reevaluate that guidance so that you can go to an operations manager at San Jose or San Francisco or San Diego who have operational experience about running airports and understand retail, food and beverage, to be a part of that rating team. So I'd ask you to push that, because I think there's a finite expertise in the city, and the thing that we don't want to have is our raiders' number-one accomplishment is that they fluent in an airplane once. We want to make sure that they clearly understand how airports operate. So I'd ask you to look at that issue.
I want to be clear that we had a very experienced panel on this one, but I'm happy to ask that question again.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl is our last speaker on the queue.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I want to thank you for the work you put in and making this happen and bringing it before the council today. Do you have a sense when we'll start seeing action at the airport, assuming we approve it today? Will actually begin to see things moving around and eventually be able to have a delicious meal from one of the local groups that are in partnership with us?
I think you will start to see action toward the end of the first quarter of next year. The stores, I'm sure, will have a phased opening, because they can't be all constructed at once, since we have to keep some of the concessions open to have passenger service during the construction period.
Right. So by maybe April, May?
I'm going to hedge my bets a little bit more and say probably more like June, July.
June, July, okay. Again, thank you.
And that's probably pushing it.
Okay, well, keep pushing. You're doing a great job pushing things at the airport. You're modernizing the airport, which hasn't been done since the Olympics, so we're really excited about it. Colleagues, I ask for an eye vote on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That closes our comments from the council on this. We have the recommendation before us. Mr. Zein?
I need to get a definite answer to the question, and I think the city attorney is trying to determine that before we take a vote on this matter.
You mean you would like to have an answer before, but we don't need to. I mean, we should be clear there.
Well, in order for me to support this, and I think the mood of the council is to support, there's a question, a legal question, versus the aspect of awarding the contract, and the question remains, if that enterprise is sold, what happens with that joint enterprise?
This is happened.
That's the question I need to know. And does it then revert to Hudson when you have a joint venture? I think Kelly Martin is looking that up from the city attorney's office.
I believe she's still on the phone. Oh, I see her on the phone.
Can we hold this until we get that answer, Mr. President?
Anybody have any objection to holding it for a minute to see if we can?
Because it could be critical, once it's, if it is a joint venture that is no longer a joint venture.
Yes, Mr. Labonge.
In the history of Los Angeles, has there ever been an enterprise that someone changed or sold or bought up? That this has happened at other concessions throughout? I don't understand why you're so focused on this point, Mr. Zein, because it does happen. And there's Mr. Molina. Why don't you come to the table, Mr. Molina?
Mr. Molina informs me that Hudson, come to the podium and answer that question, if that's appropriate. I just need to get an answer on it for the, the truth in lending, shall we say.
So we can take up item 28 first. That does not concern, I believe that package doesn't have anything with the Magic Johnson company, so let's take up 28 first. There's no objection to that. We're going to vote on 28 first, colleagues? While we're finding out the question that affects 26 and 27. So on item 28, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, one no.
Okay, those are approved. And do we have any answer? Does anybody have any answer on Mr. Zein's question? Ms. Martin?
Hi, Kelly Martin. Sorry for the delay. The relationship amongst, we are contracting with the joint venture as between the joint venture parties, their relationship, Ben Resnick will address that, because that's a contractual relationship between them.
Ben Resnick with Jeffrey Engels, Butler &amp; Mitchell, representing the LAX Magic Retail entity with Hudson. The answer to the question, I guess, pending, is that there's a joint venture in which Magic Johnson's entity is a part of.
If you can get a little closer to the microphone or bring it so that it points more directly to your mouth.
Sorry. Yes. Mr. Johnson's ability to sell or not sell his interest is limited within the joint venture agreement he has with Hudson and with Dale Mason Cochran. There is a equity ownership agreement. It should be noted that Mr. Johnson, and I know from personal discussions with him, is taking this as a first step at LAX, but this model is going to be taken across the country in other airports. It is the intent of Magic Johnson Enterprises to enter the airport concession business all across the country. With respect to Councilman Zein's direct question on, can he sell the interest? The answer is no. He cannot sell his interest in our joint venture to anybody outside the joint venture. It is controlled by the joint venture, and so he is bound within our structure. And I hope that satisfies.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
To clarify, Councilmember Zein, was your question internally within the corporate structure, is he allowed to sell? Or if he signs a contract with Lawa as one of the winning bidders, does Lawa allow him to sell his interest? So was your question, his answer was, the corporate structure does not allow him to sell his interest. But was your question as to whether or not a winning bidder, in this case, Magic Johnson, would be allowed to sell their interest, and then that particular venue would continue with, I guess, the master organization and perhaps a different name replacing Mr. Johnson?
Well, my concern is that when we have a joint venture, we remain with that joint venture as the contract calls for it, whether it be on the joint venture between Hudson and Magic Johnson or that entity and Lawa. I think it'd be one of the same. If it's one of the same, if it's not one of the same, and Lawa can then relieve itself from that, I'm looking at this, to be honest, to say, and I wouldn't be asking the question if I didn't see the two sales taking place... two sales taking place at this particular moment with Magic Johnson Enterprises, to say, "We have this contract. We move forward with this contract. We keep it whole as it is." If it separates, then what happens? Then does it go back to ground zero? Does Hudson carry it by itself?
Correct.
I mean, those are issues that need to be sorted out.
I think that latter question is not toward the corporate lawyer, but I think that's more toward Lawa, the lawyer advising Lawa. Now, when it comes to the winning bidders in general, because I think the contracts are structured basically the same when it comes to this question, correct, not just specific to Hudson?
Right.
But, so the question, the secondary question, whether it was directly your question, but it's now my question, is this. What, what ability do the contractors have with their subcontractors when it comes to continuing even though one of their subcontractors says, "I want to sell my interest"?
Okay. You're asking me about subcontractors, and you're asking me about Magic Johnson, the joint, as a participant in the joint venture?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
And those are different.
Joint ventures or subcontractors is my question.
Yeah.
Joint, people who are in the joint venture as a principal or a subcontractor is my question. So, my question is really two.
All right. As Mr. Resnick said, Magic Johnson, under the terms of their joint venture, could sell his joint venture interest within the joint venture, but that joint venture is still contracting with Lawa and is still responsible to Lawa and is still guaranteed by Hudson. So, Lawa is still protected. The operations are still in place, and all the rights pertinent to that with respect to use of his name on a storefront would continue, and Lawa would have the rights to that. We could, he couldn't by selling his joint venture, for example, force the airport to take Magic Johnson off the storefront at the store. It would still be the Magic Johnson Sports Store, whatever it was labeled at.
Okay. The label would remain the same.
The label would remain the same.
And the contracts for how long?
And the-
The contracts for how long? How long's this contract?
It's 10 years from the time the construction is completed. So, there's a window at the start to do the construction, and then there are 10-year agreement once they're built out.
Okay, thank you.
So, for a total of 10 or a total of 20?
It's really about a total of 11 by the time you allow the time for the construction, and it's a moving target because it doesn't start until you all approve it. So, it was a different time period back had they been brought forward sooner. So, it's somewhat of a moving target for the construction period, but they have, I think, a period of time to do the construction, and then, once that's completed and it's per unit, it rolls out on a unit-by-unit basis. Then it's a total of 10 years after the final construction.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Mr. Zine's questions answered, and we have items 26 and 27 before us. We'll now take a vote on these. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Those are approved as well. Thank you all very much, and thank you for the hard work on this all around. And if we can go to the next item called special, please. That would bring us to item number one. Okay, item number one is before us. We do have cards on item number one. We'll send that forth with without objection. Sean Murphy and Van Nuys on item one.
How many minutes I got left? How many minutes I got left? Yeah, I support this ordinance. Thank you. Have a nice day, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Matt Dowd on number one.
Yes, thank you, and my commiserations go to Tony Cadness because that's the way they do business in the city of Los Angeles, just like these lighting improvement districts. Deny the protests and confirm the assessments. That's what this one's about. Nice little lighting district improvement, Darlington and Westgate Avenue Number Four, Lighting District, Channel 35 on Matt Dowd. See, public hearing was held September 29. Deny the protests. Not even Tony Cadness doesn't have the power to upend the city council in their shady manipulative ways. Thank you.
We'll close our public comment on number one. If we can please open the roll. Sorry, this is for the final vote, Mr. Clerk, right, not for continuation for the lighting districts? Okay, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. That brings us to item number eight, called special for cards. All right, is Charles Doherty here? Thank you for your patience. A very good morning. And after that will be Roberta M. O'Donnell. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Charles Doherty. I'm president of Windsor Village Community Association. Item number eight is tied in with item seven and nine. I suppose that it's being taken because of the speaker cards. I'll just take this opportunity. We've worked, it was August 15, 2007, when we first applied for the ICO in front of you to get the work done to become a historic preservation overlay zone. I'd like to thank Councilman Wesson and in his office, Andrew Westhall and Sylvia Lacy, also our good friend, Councilman Labange, and also at planning, Ken Bernstein, Blake Kendrick and Courtney Schoenwald for their enormous help and absolute terrific guidance in this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Roberta O'Donnell? Is she here? If not, Matt Dowd, number eight.
Yes. Well, I think I like these. This is a historic preservation overlay zone, the HPOZ, yes. So, technically, it is meant to protect the historic nature of the community, but in all the time I've been here, I've seen 1,000 variances and exemptions, and the city council always has a way to change it whenever they want. So, you know, I'm happy for you if you can get this through, obviously if it's on the agenda, as you see with the airport concessions. Once it makes the agenda, it's a yes. So, congratulations. Twelve ayes. Matt Dowd signing off on this one. Thank you.
That will close our public comment. Mr. Labange?
I just want to thank Mr. Wesson and the good work that he and his staff have done on this.
Thank you. Go ahead and prepare the roll on this and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, without objection. Next item, please. That brings us to item 16, called special by Councilman Parks. Mr. Parks, we have the financial status report, number 16, before us, and why don't we ask the CIO to come forward? Maybe what we will do is begin with the report from the CIO, and then we'll have Mr. Parks go through a series of questions. Colleagues, this is our financial status report for the first quarter of this fiscal year, and so with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Santana.
Good morning. We have a brief PowerPoint that we have to sort of walk you through, the financial status report for this quarter. We show that. Copy should be distributed. Do you have one yet? They're being distributed now. If you don't have one, they're being passed out now. Okay, as you know, we provide a status report, and we try to do it every quarter, to provide you a snapshot on how we're doing in reference to our budget. What's interesting is that I've learned from talking to several of my counterparts and our financial advisors that we're actually one of the few cities that does this on a regular basis. We look at our expenditures, we look at revenues, and we try to make an assessment of how we're doing so that we could take immediate action as we see one of those areas or both of those areas out of line from our budget. This SaaS report really is a reflection of the hard work that you have all done and the difficult decisions that you've made, and I think what it tells a story about how much of that is paid off. If we could go to the first slide on page two, it gives you a snapshot of our budget for the last 10, 11 years. Clearly, in every year, we see an increase with the exception of this last year. And while it may look like a minor reduction compared from one year to the other, when our costs are increasing, it has a significant impact. The outcome of that has been a reduction of our workforce. Our workforce is now smaller than it was when Mayor Riordan was down the hall, and it's reflected in the final bar graph that's before you. We're one of the few cities that could currently say this, that we've significantly reduced the size of the workforce, and unfortunately, the future entails that we're going to have to continue in that path. What, where we are today is that if we continue the same level of spending, at the end of the fiscal year, we'll be facing a $63 million problem. Now, it's important to point out what makes up that problem. Part of it is due to continued spending in the sworn accounts and in the personnel accounts, but some of them are things that we don't control, such the E-RIP buyouts. We reduced the number of furlough days as a result of one of our labor agreements and a variety of other costs. It's important to emphasize that we do have solutions to this problem. The Budget and Finance Committee and the mayor directed departments to come back in the next two or four weeks with plans on how they're going to meet their budget targets. We did anticipate some of this, and we identified funding in the UB exactly for this purpose. In the broader scheme of things, if you go to the next chart, chart six, it puts it in context. The $63 million deficit that we see is on a quarterly basis, 15.9 million, and for every month that we allow it to continue without action, it adds an additional 5.3. The value of that in the context of an over $4 billion general fund budget is 1.5 percent. Half of it we resolved, and so when you look at it in the context and the piece that's unresolved, it's less than 0.7 percent of our overall budget. I know the press, some of them got it right, some of them did it, and some of them talked about the fact that we're facing a $63 million problem right now, and in fact, that is not true. We're in fact on track, for the most part, from the budget that you adopted. And if you all remember where we were this time last year, this time last year, we're facing a $300 million plus budget deficit, which ballooned all the way close to 500 million, over $500 million by the time the fiscal year was over. So, this reduction, the fact that we're talking about something in the context of $63 million and really $30 million, says the city is in strong financial standing. Our financial SaaS report also provides a snapshot on where we are with revenue. We were very conservative on our revenue projections, and we worked closely with the Budget and Finance Committee to examine every revenue to make sure that we were trying to really reflect the current economic environment. And the bottom line is, while there's pluses and minuses across the board, for the most part, our revenue is flat. You know, flat used to be a bad thing. Flat is now the new up in this kind of economy, where we, when we saw consecutive double dip, double-digit declines in our revenue and in ways that we hadn't seen since the Great Depression. So, the news here is that we've bottomed out and that revenues continue to stay at the same level. The bad news is that revenues aren't going up, and we know for a fact that our costs are. The driver, of course, is our persistent unemployment rate, and if you look, this chart provides you sort of a snapshot of unemployment and its impact on sales tax, which is the most sensitive to the unemployment rate. What's telling is that if you look back in, between 1990 and 1997, when the last major recession hit, there was a spike in unemployment and a drop in revenue, which is reflected by the blue dotted line. It took nearly nine years to recover in our sales tax from that recession. The dip in the recession that we're facing now is much greater, and so any perception or thought that we could simply write this out for the next couple of years and we will be fine is frankly not based on past trends. This recession is arguably much stronger. It has had a greater depth on not just Los Angeles, but the nation and on a global basis. It's very likely that we're not going to see a recovery of these revenues, at least in the sales tax, which is the most sensitive, for another decade. The following chart is a more specific look at that for the last three years. The blue bar graphs show the change, and the red show the ups and downs that the tax has gone. One of the other pieces of our SaaS report is providing you a sense of where we are with the reserve fund. The reserve fund is our savings account. It tells, it's important because we borrow from it throughout the year and we pay it for cash flow reasons. When investors look at whether or not they're going to buy our bonds or buy our TRAN, they look at this as one of the primary indicators of whether we're in the position to pay them back. It's part of the reason why, if you look at 2010 and 11, that we had a difficult time selling the last three months of the TRAN, because there was concern that our revenue, our reserve fund, was below where it should be. You have set as a policy, and hopefully it'll be a charter amendment, that we will have a reserve fund, no less than 5 percent of the general fund. Where we are today is that we're better than we were last year. We're better than what we budgeted, so we're heading in that right direction, but we're still short $45 million of where the reserve fund should be to ensure that we hit that 5 percent mark. The 5 percent mark is a minimum. It's not a, it's a floor, not a ceiling, and it's a base level it should be to ensure that we have the capacity to borrow in a way that we have to do on an annual basis. So, in summary, we're, you adopted a budget that was balanced. There's still areas of it that we're working on. We've identified some handful of departments that need to engage in a further reductions, so you're going to continue seeing additional position nominations and layoffs throughout the course of the year. But for the most part, we're on track of where we predicted. There also is in the budget, $53 million that is targeted to, where proceeds, part of the proceeds would go from our parking garage deal. To give you a quick summary of where we're at with that, we are, while we're behind schedule, we've been working hard to catch up. We continue to have a strong interest from the financial community and from companies from around the world. We had about 11 to 13 different firms come to Los Angeles to look at our garages, to talk to our team. I made an effort to meet with as many of them as I could. There still continues to be interest. We received over 300 questions on our concession agreement. The questions and the answers are posted online so they could all know what was being asked, and so we believe it's still a viable program, and we will be coming to you within the next 30 days with an update in closed session to discuss some of the concession points, and our goal is to come to you in January, early February with a final proposal. So, what does the next future look like? Okay, the next four years, despite the fact that we've reduced the size of government at the lowest levels it's been since over a decade, we've had layoffs, a combination of 1,000 layoffs and transfers in the last year. Every single department has experienced a reduction, including my own and all of yours. We have 26 days of furloughs for the majority of our employees. We've reduced library hours and we've reduced programs across the board. Despite all of that, we're still facing deficits. Now, it's hard for the public to understand that when in fact, we've done as much as we have. And the answer for these deficit, 320 next year, 430 the year, 12, 13, 515, 13, 14, is because our costs continue to rise. It's not just about revenue. The fact that our revenue is flat and not growing at an aggressive pace contributes to it, but the reality is that these costs are, extend that problem. If you look at the next chart, chart 12, it gives you a breakdown of what the 320 million deficit is. 30 percent of it- 30% of it comes from COLAs that were reached through the coalition agreement. 18% comes from sworn pension increases. 24% comes from civilian pension increases. 18% comes from our healthcare, increases in healthcare, which we experience every single year. And 3% comes from our workers' compensation. The remainder of it is a policy to preserve 1% for capital improvements. These are all areas, much of which that are difficult to combat. And so what you'll be seeing in the next several weeks are recommendations to start digging deep into these very difficult issues. In the area of pension reform, in the area of healthcare, asking our employees to contribute more for the healthcare that they currently receive, and increasing their co-pays, and a variety of other areas to reduce those costs. These are the drivers, this is the reason we continue to face deficits in the future and why services continue to be cut. This other chart, number 13, gives you even a more specific look at that, how these specific areas are driving the deficits that we're facing. Page number 14 gives you a look at healthcare and the fact that healthcare has gone up so significantly in the last 10 years and continues to go up, even under the healthcare reform that's been adopted. We expect healthcare costs to continue. And then the final chart is page 15, that shows how our pension costs on the general fund side will go from $870 million next fiscal year, all the way up to $1.29 billion by the year 15, 16. And in order to start addressing that, we have proposed for discussion on Friday, pension reform for new hires for sworn, and then next week, there'll be a discussion around civilian pension reform for new hires. You will also have a discussion in closed session regarding retiree health, which is one of the main drivers to our pension costs. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and thank you.
We have our chairman, Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Zine, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Weezer. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Miguel, could you give us an idea on, when you mentioned earlier, the P3? At what point in the timing do we need to be concerned if all of a sudden that date begins to slip in the first quarter? When do we start having to make adjustments? Because that's roughly about $6 million a month.
We should be concerned now. We're three months behind of where we wanted to be. The reason why we're asking for some of these reductions to be taken today versus waiting till mid-year is because we know that we're behind, and while we're optimistic of being able to achieve our target, it's not done yet. And so until it's done, we'll be able to anticipate how we fit it into the budget. When that day comes, hopefully in early next calendar year, we'll also be able to place those earnings within the context of not only this year, but more importantly, next year, which is really where we have the larger deficit.
Okay. And then also, when can we expect the next FSR? Is that the end of this year versus next year?
We hope to have the next FSR before the calendar year is out and provide a SaaS report on how the reductions that departments are being instructed to take, how they're doing. We'll have a clearer picture in our revenue. You know, we have limited information now on what our revenue projections are, but in the next FSR, we'll be able to give you a greater sense.
Do you have the ability to just comment on the Controller's cash flow report and how, what some of the issues there?
Well, for the most part, her cash flow report mirrors much of what our FSR is saying. We work very closely with her to ensure that we're using the same reference points, so it's consistent.
I don't know if you want to add anything more to that, Melissa?
Yes, the Controller did agree that about 80% of our revenues will be received the last two quarters, so that's why our revenue projections are preliminary right now.
Yeah, speak into that mic if no one else will hear you. I'll hear closer to you.
Just bring it closer to you.
Melissa Krantz, Office of the CAO, yes, the revenue statement by the Controller's office is that 80% are received the last two quarters of the fiscal year.
Okay. So even though we get a report by the end of this year on FSR, we won't get a real sense of revenue until maybe the first quarter of 2011? Is that what we expect?
That's probably safe to say.
Okay. Let me ask also, as it relates to loan paybacks that we've closed out the last fiscal year, when will we get a sense of whether departments have acknowledged those and that we're going to receive some of those paybacks in this?
We'll actually be working with the Controller over the next couple of months to actually work with departments and then work on getting those loans repaid as funds are received from special funds, but through other mechanisms as well. So basically, the next couple of months.
And then what about revenue ordinances? Have we achieved all of those that are in place for this fiscal year?
We do have some delays, but they are on track to be implemented.
Okay, could we work with the city attorney so we can get those as quickly as possible? Because we'll be now losing about three months of revenue. The other issue, new revenues that we talked about in the budget, could you give us a feel of issues such as the foreclosure, the return on contracts 10% and other issues that we thought were going to achieve some revenue status?
Yes, the Department of Building and Safety had reported that the $5 million that they were budgeted to receive for the foreclosure fee ordinance may not be received. They reported that homeowners who are demonstrating that they're trying to achieve compliance that are able to avoid the fee, and then they reported that they wouldn't even have the staff available to collect the fee if need be.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to, the CAO, also make two minor additions to the Budget and Finance Report on Instruction 5 and 7. Those are both report backs, and we'd like to have those at next Monday's Budget and Finance meeting. So we can just put that date for next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine is our next speaker. Dennis Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are you aware that Building and Safety is proposing a 10% increase on building permit fees to hire additional personnel?
I know that they're proposing increasing the fees, the decision on what it goes for is a separate matter.
And when I look at licenses, permits, fees, and fines, would that be included in these numbers?
I'm sorry.
Would it, when I look at the license, permit, fees, and fines, general fund receipts, would that be included in those numbers, revenue anticipated coming in to that category of licenses, permit, fees, and fines?
No, actually, the position that you're referring to in the new program and the new fee has to do with the green initiative and implementing some of the state action as well. As I understand it, that money would go to their enterprise fund. It would not go to the general fund that's indicated in the report.
Okay. And the other question I have regarding, I think Mr. Parks brought up, P3, the parking, the sale of parking rights of the City of Los Angeles, are those dollars included in this proposed or the receipts, fund receipts, under the category of all others? Are those dollars anticipated and included in here, or are they excluded?
Right now, we're predicting that revenue will be on target. And including with that estimate is we would receive the $53 million from the parking asset, and it is part of the departmental receipts. So to answer your question, yes, we're assuming that revenue will be received in this fiscal year.
But I think you're looking at, if you're asking the question is, are we assuming not, that in our deficit that we have projected today, that not having received that concession? No, we have not, because we believe we'll still get it.
Still what?
We believe we still will be able to make a recommendation in this fiscal year to receive enough payment for the long-term lease of our garages.
And if not, then the debt would be $53 million additional dollars?
That is correct. $53 million.
So the factors that are listed, and I'm looking at the receipts, general fund receipts, for example, the fee for ambulance service, the fee for paramedic service, all those fees have gone up. Are we including those fees in these projections on page 7?
Yes.
Yes.
And the 45% of the people who don't pay for the photo red light violation, are we including those fees in here too? Because I'm looking at reality versus fiction, the reality is, a lot of these folks aren't paying while they owe the money, and we know that our debt collection is terrible. So we're projecting revenue to come in, which is not sufficient to keep us running successfully. And I'm trying to find that transparency that we keep talking about, the reality versus the transparency.
But to the extent that we budgeted for it, then it is included. And so what we're saying, that our revenues are in alignment with what we budgeted. So how we accounted for those outstanding debts, to the extent that each revenue stream was accounting for an increase in collections?
Right.
Then we're saying that we're projecting being on target to that. What I can't tell you now, but we could certainly tell you, is specific to that item.
But we are projecting, but we can't say that we're receiving.
Well, we're saying that we are on target on what we had included in the budget.
So we are receiving, to this point, what we projected?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I don't sit on Budget and Finance, and I see the SaaS report and throughout our budget discussion in the last round, there were motions that spoke to how we look at ourselves as a city, as a municipal corporation, and how to look at our departments, and the notion of performance standards by our department heads, and how they look at their assets, how we look at our real estate, how do we manage our real estate in terms of revenue generation and understanding the market and leveraging what we have? Has any of that type of discussion, does that come forward to you when you do your SaaS reports? Do we get any insight or any kind of input from the department heads in saying that if I can do this and this and this, I can create revenue and achieve these goals? If it wasn't for the policy, you know, I feel shackled, you know? Is that kind of dialogue energy occurring at any level?
It's an ongoing process. I think we're tackling on some of the bigger issues, like within the context of the full year plan that your council approved, there was a component of that that looked specific at the issue of our core services. What is a core service, and what is it that only a city employee can be doing? What we will be presenting to you this calendar year is a report specific to the convention center to look at, provide a recommendation on whether it makes sense to hand over the operations of the convention center, not sell it or lease it, but just the operations to a private vendor. We're also working in concert with Mr. Labonge as it relates to the zoo. How do we better establish a relationship with GLAZA so that they have greater influence in managing the zoo, but also, as important, are better equipped to fundraise? Our office works closely with each department on an ongoing basis on things that are perhaps not of that magnitude. It's an ongoing process. What we are recommending that we do as part of the mid-year financial SaaS report is provide an update on all of those various initiatives and work and present new ones that will address many of the issues that you raised, as well as taking some off the books for a variety of reasons.
Well, we, in planning and building safety, we're literally sifting through all of our functions and seeing, okay, where does it make sense to assess fees because of the return to the investor, meaning the applicant, who wants a certain performance level to be realized if they had adequate funding and/or resources? But it's been my experience that the toolbox, for example, and this is not putting any one department down, but the toolbox we need to sharpen our capacity to understand our real estate and how we leverage, I don't see it in any one department. I see a lot of processing, but actual creation of revenue, creation of opportunities to leverage, I don't see it.
Right.
And maybe that's a directive from us to direct the departments to perform in that manner, and maybe we should establish performance standards. But to get there, we need, how can I put this? A clear perspective on what could be expected, what should be expected, given the nature of those capacities. Do we have that ability to analyze our departments in that manner?
We do, but keep in mind that part of what departments are assessing right now is what the impacts have been of the cuts that have been made so far. I mean, by default of the fact that departments have been cut between 10% and 20% in the last 16, 18 months, they're trying to figure out how to still achieve the outcome, the expectation that your council has of them with this much smaller staff that they currently have. My office is a good example of that. We've seen a 20% reduction in our staff in the last year, and yet, we're expected to do the same reports, provide the same financial SaaS reports, do the same labor negotiations, do the same monitoring of our finances. And that's just a small example, but you see that in the discussion around street medians, you see that across the board. We're being forced to be more efficient by that reduction. Some of it is a good thing, some of it is not. And so I think in the next, between now and the time the budget comes out, it is the opportunity for departments to come in and say, this is how I could, instead of just reacting to the cuts, this is how, in fact, I could better manage those cuts and be more efficient if you would only do the following things. And that's what we're hoping to get from them.
And this is my last statement, I know there's an adjustment period. You have to resettle and find another balancing point, I understand that. But it behooves us to establish that proactivity and understanding lost opportunities, understanding our constraints so that we can make directives that are real, that realizes real dollars. And just in the whole land use area, I won't bore you with those details, but in the land use area, I just strongly feel that we are missing a great opportunity to prepare for the eventual upswing, because everyone's expecting that swing, and we need to push in that direction. But I appreciate your answers, and I just need to voice these concerns, because we can lay back and let it happen to us, or we can respond and be proactive and attack the problem and come up with these revenue generating solutions.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Before that, just a quick introduction, I'm sorry, Mr. Alacon wanted to just introduce somebody, and then we'll hear from Mr. Weezer on this as well.
Council members, I rise for the purposes of an introduction. I want to introduce, today is Americans with Disabilities Awareness Day, and two of my staff members are being followed by people who have disabilities. So first, let me introduce Brenda Gertman, who is, Brenda? Wait, Brenda, wait. Brenda is following Becca Doughton, my communications director. I didn't have a chance to chat with her, but I did have a chance to chat with Gabriela Martinez, who's from El Sereno, and is tracking Actley Padilla, my alleged director. And she has a very amazing story. She was a marathon runner, and at the age of 13, dove into a pool and fractured her neck. She was in the pool for four minutes when her brother, her 21-year-old brother, pulled her out and gave her mouth-to-mouth resuscitation after being trained the month before. And she survived. They said that she was going to have a future very similar to Christopher Reeves, but she tells me that she is walking and she is out of her chair. She goes to Cal State LA and wants to be a lawyer and maybe even someday sit at one of our desks. So we want to applaud these two people for demonstrating. So, we want to applaud these two people for demonstrating that people with disabilities are firmly entrenched a part of our society, and part of our work ethic, and part of our success. And so, congratulations to both of them for being here today.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Weezer, back on the FSR.
Mr. Santana, on page twelve of your report, you talk about the 2011-12 deficit, a total of three hundred and nineteen million. And you say projected changes for the eleven, twelve. So, this pie chart is showing us what again? If you could summarize?
It's showing what is contributing to the three hundred and twenty million dollar deficit, so it's...
Gotcha. Now, the capital improvement expenditure program, fifty-one point three million. Most of those dollars, I thought, would be bond dollars, capital dollars, not general fund. Those are general fund dollars?
There's a city policy to put aside a percentage of the general fund for capital on top of everything else that we do. The policy, in the last few years, we haven't had the ability to actually make that commitment. And so, but because it is your policy, we have to identify it as part of the deficit until you decide that we're not doing that.
So, we, that's actually, but they're not committed dollars to any...
No, this is for, it's basically for maintenance, for the most part.
Most part, they're maintenance.
Maintenance of our facilities.
Oh, so this is maintenance, it's not actual projects?
It is for capital improvements or infrastructure, and the policy is to set aside one percent of general fund revenue.
Hey, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The policy is for capital improvements and infrastructure, and the policy sets a designation of one percent of general fund revenue.
So, it's one percent? And those are, in the event we have cost overruns? Can you explain that to me?
It's designed as a, it's sort of in your own personal finances, if you, in order to deal with a leaky roof, or you want to improve, you know, do you have a fund for those kinds of deferred maintenance?
Got it, got it. So, it's a set aside...
It's a set aside that you've decided, as a council, that we always will put one percent of the general fund for capital needs, beyond what we do with MYCLA and other kinds of things.
So, why is that a deficit? I mean, we do that every year. It should just be part of the budget, and why is it a deficit?
It is. It is part of the budget, but what we're saying is that, in the last few years, while the policy has existed, your council has voted to not exercise that, because we've had other needs. In other words, as a way of saving jobs or maintaining programs, we decided for a couple of years that we're not going to set aside that money. Instead, we're using it to deal with the ongoing deficit. But until your council does that, we have to assume it as part of the overall budget.
So, what did we do last year, for example, or this fiscal year? What did we do?
This fiscal year, you decided not to put aside that one percent, to use that money instead for dealing, reducing the number of cuts that we're going to have to make.
And how much, do you remember how much percentage of the deficit that was for this fiscal year?
It would have been approximately the same.
It was about the same? Okay. So, going into next year, we could also, we could change the policy and say, we're no longer going to put this aside. Would you recommend that?
We did last year, and we're very likely to recommend it again this year.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation and the hard work of the CIO's office. And I know we spoke about privately, I'll say also publicly, because I think sometimes when this gets covered in the press, it's important for us to know what's before us, that it's not that we're sixty-three-plus in the red today, it's that if we don't correct, we will be sixty-three in the red. So, it's a quarter of that right now. Important to identify, we do this regularly, but instead of it being, you know, over a percent of our budget, we're at a fraction of a percent today. What we have to do is correct, which is why we do the FSR, and it's very important. Just some kind of news that we can use, that I think I want to reiterate for public consumption as well, that Mr. Santana also pointed out, but just to hone in. So, since fiscal year oh-eight, colleagues, we're down about forty-two hundred positions, of which thirty-seven hundred are from the general fund. That's a pretty remarkable turnaround in a pretty short time, considering that we're government and not the private sector in spending only what we have, and mostly overwhelmingly not doing that through any layoffs, but doing that through transfers and retirements. It's good to see some things up, like property tax, fees and licenses, hotel tax. Utility tax was way down. I think that's partially a reflection of the weather, which is a good thing. We didn't have to turn on our air conditioning as much, but usually, that's linked to the electricity use, and it was the coolest summer we've had on record. Not that we want hot weather so that we can have more revenues, that's a positive one we'll take, but sales and business tax are down. That said, sales tax is back to where it was in August oh-eight, just before the crash. So, what's, you know, since we've had basically deflation, not deflation, but pretty flat growth in the economy since then, that's not a bad indicator to see sales tax back where it was in that August oh-eight, even though it's obviously down from where we were at other points. Page thirteen, colleagues, I think is the most, one of the most important ones, and something you'll hear me be just a broken record on, is with all the attention that we have brought on pensions, which is critical, and we will continue to, and it's scheduled, and we welcome the mayor's embrace of the proposals that we've been talking about in EERC, and that the CIO has been working on, that can't be anything but positive. To give us some context, and we'll talk about this more when it comes to pensions, pensions right here, the main drivers of expenditure growth in the four-year outlook, one of the things we always neglect is healthcare. And even as the main drivers, pensions, you know, continue, LACERS actually goes down over some time in terms of how big of an increase it is, but healthcare continues to go up and up. These are kind of back-of-the-nap calculations, but the agreement we came to with Engineer and Architects Association about contributing to the benefit that city workers now have of having guaranteed healthcare when you retire, of contributing two percent of our salaries to get that, which seems pretty reasonable, and that we arrived at through a lot of good negotiations, that will get us more this year from a small, relatively small unit and small percentage of our overall workforce than if we took the entire sworn side passed through pension reform now. So, we're doing pension reform really for the twenty-year look, but people who expect to balance three hundred and nineteen million dollar deficit on pensions should know that it's not going to happen this year. In fact, I think what the CIO projected on that one is, if we were hiring a thousand sworn new hires a year, which we're not, we're maybe hiring three hundred for attrition, that over a thirty-year period, that's a hundred and seventy-three million. So, even at its kind of midpoint, it's only about five million a year, before only doing three hundred. You really save nothing the first couple of years, it's only until people retire, but it really would only be about one point five million a year for half of our workforce. Doing just the contribution of two percent into our healthcare for retirement is something that'll get more than that, even on the first year. So, really keeping us focused on healthcare benefits, asking our labor partners to come to the table, and making sure that we, in our joint labor management committee, that we can use that as a vehicle is going to be critical, so that we don't have to use other ways of obtaining that. And then lastly, I know I'm a second over here, too. On page number fifteen, when you look at the estimated future contributions, the pension reform piece is critical. We're not going to reduce this to something flat. I mean, if you actually look at what we would have to get for folks who are out there saying, we have to change that, we can all agree on the low-hanging fruit that is out there, changing some of the formulas, et cetera. But because this is really about new hires that will come in, this effect will be for the generation that comes after us. And we had a generation before us that really didn't look out for us here. You know, you scratch your heads and wonder, what were people thinking twenty years ago? Make sure we do the right thing for that. At the same time, we're going to have to make cuts, folks, and we're going to have to ask departments to live within their means. And when departments aren't, we have to pull that rug out early on in the year, because I refuse to do what we did last year, which is every three months, come in here and say, the deficit has grown. This is manageable right now. It's a relatively small percentage, but if we don't get on it immediately, and just, this wasn't picked up in the news, but what I'll end on is that, while there is a projected deficit if we did nothing, there's also a projected deficit if we do these solutions, and that gets us to zero. So, it could have been just as easily reported, you know, that while they're here recommending that, and the passage of this will get us back to a balanced budget that we did pass. And so, I urge you to be able to implement that, give the CIO and the mayor the backup, and make sure that those departments that you oversee legislatively are staying within their means.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. You are two minutes, twenty-five seconds over. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Who in your team is, like, everyday focusing on reducing costs? I know, but what, some citizen made a complaint to me. Often, he sees city trucks idle. And I don't know if this, if the general service could look at how much gas you need to turn it on or off, but they do a lot of idling, you know? And so, I told that citizen, I will ask that. So, I asked you, if you look at an idle action, would that save dollars for gasoline? How about our other costs? I mean, are we really, just, you know, I know what I've personally done, I've done some things, I haven't bought anything. Are we buying less staples, less pins, less, et cetera, et cetera?
I think we are, but I think you raise a good point. I think one of the challenges of this last year is that our deficits have been so big that we've had to find these global solutions, when in fact, there could be a number of different initiatives that may not generate the, you know, five hundred million dollar savings, but combined add up to that. We're doing some restructuring in my office now to, within our existing resources, to establish, form a team that's going to be looking at these operational issues, to specifically dive deep into the contracting practices, or the time it takes for due contracting, or looking at how we buy our purchasing power, how to better take advantage of that. A number of different initiatives, so that we start dealing with what Mr. Reyes also indicated, the efficiency of government. And that's an important part of what my office could do, and we're establishing that team now for that reason.
Very good. I also wanted to ask you about, in rethinking, Ray and Miguel, in rethinking some of our services, I mean, there's certain basic services. Now, some services are stopped. Do you know that the biggest problem with street cleaning now is our motor operators, our machines are not operational? You need ninety percent of the machines to work, because general services doesn't have the support, they don't do that. That means streets don't get swept, that means tickets should not be issued, although sometimes they are, because there's a communication thing. And I don't want to see us give tickets to people just because it's posted. I want to make sure that we get service. So, I want to look at that, because people do want us to be responsive, they want the service, but they want to make sure it's, I do not like to use this term, but fair and balanced, in the sense of that. But I will use that term to describe that. I also wanted to say that, on the issue that is very important, on the three Ps, I'm not a thousand percent sure sold on that, because of other problems municipalities had. And also, I don't think we do a good enough job. We've got a parking garage right here that would be an overflow for Alvera Street that's never opened on the weekends. We have, Flusher Bowlin Square should creatively be enhanced. So, looking at those things, I just wanted to mention that, too. All year round, reducing our costs, and looking at ways to do that, look at the processes to rethink that, and what we do. And we're losing some grants, I know we have a problem on Wilshire Boulevard now, because of the limited staff, we've lost our ability to fix Wilshire. Now, I've got to go back, not to square one, but down a little, to find a way to just get the big bad problems fixed on Wilshire. But all those are real important. And I think real-time information on this to let people know, because, and I said this again, I'm told this, I love the Rolling Stones, but I'm told Mick Jagger in the morning will come up at his hotel and deliver him a spreadsheet of what business practice took place that night before when he had his concert, what was sold, et cetera. He went to that big school, business school. I just mentioned that. I think we need to know this stuff. We need to know what it costs and how it is. Last question. Do you think it's fair for eight hours that we charge someone forty-six thousand dollars to run from Griffith Park to downtown? Forty-six thousand dollars DOT is charging, this is special events. I'm for special events, I believe in sharing the city, but I can't figure that price out. I want to be fair and let people celebrate the city when we do these variety of events, whether it's marathons, or runs, or triathletes, or whatever. But I think we, I think we almost need an office of special events that operates on the weekends, so we're not, because we're charging time and a half for weekends, but we should say, if we want to serve the people, we should serve them when they need us, not when we want to be, you know? So, those are things to rethink him. I'll talk to you later on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Alakon?
I'm, Jenison is handing me, her staff's work. Recovered? We spent an enormous amount of time last year consternating about layoffs, and I just wanted to know what the, where are we now? I understand there have been three hundred and seventy-four layoffs to date?
I would ask the personnel department to respond to it.
Is the personnel department here? Okay, it's my, this, these numbers are coming from the budget committee report, based on verbal testimony, so I guess it was the personnel department that made that statement. So, we have three hundred and seventy-four layoffs, and you described to us at the time that if we laid off three hundred and fifty people, we would break even. If we laid off less than three hundred and fifty people, it would cost us more than what we saved in laying them off. So, we ended up, and there was talk about laying off four thousand people, and we only ended up laying off three hundred and seventy-four people, and I'm just not understanding why, if the break-even point was three hundred and fifty, why did we lay anybody off?
The short answer is, is that number is not going to stay at three hundred and seventy. You just saw that there are certain departments that haven't fully implemented their budgets, and several of those departments have large number of civilian employees, and so, they will be working on further reductions that will likely result in layoffs. If you, if you recall the discussion around the trigger, there were two elements to that trigger. There was the issue of the layoffs, but also the issue of the furloughs. A big part of the solution for this year's budget are the furlough savings.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the three hundred and fifty, as the benchmark for whether or not we're making money or losing money.
No, I understand that, but when the issue was, if we would have not, if we would have chosen, if your council would have adopted a policy not to lay off, in addition to that, you also would have had to agree not to furlough. And the furlough savings alone are sixty-three million dollars in the budget this year that are being generated every single day. That's a major...
Why would, why would the furlough contingent on the layoffs?
Because that was part of the agreements that the coalition was making. You couldn't just bifurcate the issue of furloughs and layoffs, they were combined.
No, but only in the context of saving money.
Well, that's the only context that matters, right.
If in fact, we haven't saved anything, because by virtue, we essentially saved twenty-four positions in dollars.
But you also would have not been able to furlough, and so, that would have created an additional sixty-three million dollar budget.
But that's based on the projections, that we were going to need to lay off many more.
No, it's based on today. So, it's, the issue of furloughs was coupled with the issue of layoffs, so you needed to be able to furlough in order to be able to meet your budget. We were, we were trying to decouple them, so that there could be a separate discussion just on the issue of layoffs, and there could be, then, then that exactly the analysis you made would be something that we could consider, but that was not unfortunately part of the...
On my time, if it's, he took most of, the decoupling or not, the question that I raised was if we didn't lay off more than three hundred and fifty, we weren't saving a dime to the city, we've actually laid off three seventy-four, and you're showing a shortfall of only sixty-three million through the duration of the year. So, I for one, don't buy that we needed to do the layoffs in this manner, and I believe that we could have found the savings, the sixty-three million, someplace else. And, and, you know, so I have a whole bunch of other questions about, about that, but I would like to get a report back, if possible, if my colleagues would agree, on how much we saved as a result of the three hundred and seventy-four layoffs versus the three hundred and fifty, which was break even. And in fact, maybe we didn't save, maybe we lost money, because we're paying more in unemployment benefits than in, in salaries that we would have paid. So, that's a very interesting fact, that I think, you know, when we're talking about layoffs, the reason that we ended up laying anybody off, and the reason that you say that the issue of furloughs was, was combined, was because the projections were wrong, in terms of how much money we needed to save. That's why, even though we've only laid off three hundred and seventy-four, notwithstanding the furloughs, that's why we didn't need to lay them off if it didn't cost the city anything. I just don't understand the rationale for that at all.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Your time is over. Mr. Corretts, please.
Of course, I agree with Mr. Alakon, but I'm not going to beat a dead horse, and that's not why I'm, I'm standing up here. that's not why I'm, I'm standing up here.
I did, yeah.
Well, I suspect it is, unless, unless we find a few more council members willing to take a different position. But I'll just ask a more technical question. I noticed we're, we're down in our parking fee collection, our parking fine collection. We added, I think, 10,000 new meters. Why would we be down on collections?
Part of the parking fee collection's about, down about $2 million, because of the delayed implementation of the rate increase for the fine, but we need further analysis for the next FSR on the parking fee collection.
Now, my understanding, among other things, is that we have 70 unfilled positions for the folks that write those citations, due to managed hiring. My understanding is also that they bring in about three times their salary, so I would imagine that, unless there's something I'm missing, also could be a factor. How can we break that out of managed hiring and actually hire people that we need to, to do this job properly, and I believe we're budgeted, and how do we pull in that revenue? We're not doing it just for the revenue, these are people that we're supposed to cover, the areas they're supposed to cover, but I suspect that's showing somewhat in a loss that we're seeing reflected here.
I think as we, as the new initiative on the new meters gets fully implemented, I think they're close to done, I don't think they're quite done, and we see how that works. I think that's something that we need to look at, is make sure that we have the capacity and staff to collect in that revenue. So that's, I think that's part of the analysis that should be taking place, and then as we look at how the program is operating.
Because I know we were, at one point, increasing our parking rates and hours, and still having our revenue go down, because some of our meters are failed.
That's right.
So now we're, we're starting to address the meter failure issue, but it seems like we're adding an additional one if we're cutting the people writing the citations. We're still going to wind up losing, as we have been, we need to address, I would think, all those pieces to get it working properly.
Right.
There is two issues with the traffic officers. One, we've not had a request come forward from the department to fill those positions as of yet, so they're not stuck in managed hiring, they haven't been requested as of yet, as far as we're aware. The other thing on parking citation revenue is, the state budget that was just adopted did impose a $3 per ticket fee, that we're now going to have to remit to the state, so that will impact our revenues, unless we do a subsequent $3 increase.
Now, if our department hasn't requested it, is there some way for council to request appropriate staffing, rather than a more inappropriately low staffing?
Legal issue, I mean, the department's a hiring authority, does that mean that's...
I would have to confer with Mr. Trevry on that one.
If you could let us know at some near-future time, if so, I, I think we could bring forward a motion to, to make that request. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I was also kind of focusing on the layoffs, and it was comforting to know that we transferred What I noticed from this report is that there are still over 1,000 special funded positions, and was wondering how we're doing on continuing to maybe get folks off our general fund and into this, these thousand, and I don't really, it wasn't clear on what these positions were, and whether or not they actually, we could transfer folks into those funds, but wondering how we're doing on, you know, quickly transferring folks into these 1,000 specially funded positions. It seems to me that would also be good for the general fund.
Oh, the, Maggie reported in Budget Finance that the transfers are continuing, they're obviously not as aggressive as they were, you know, six months ago. I think you're right, I think your council in particular should be commended, and you in particular, for the fact that over 700 people were transferred in record time. And that means, part of the reason why the layoff number is only 360 is because of that. And, you know, again, if it's 100% special funded, and the department has demonstrated that they have the budget for that position, then they have the authority to, to fill it. And so that, that continues forward, again, not knowing what the positions are, we may be at a point where we reach the, the maximum of people who have sort of classifications that transfer from one general fund to special fund, these may be more specialized. But I think it does highlight how aggressive the city has been in making those transfers.
Right. I guess, I would like, if it's possible, and maybe get a report back on what those positions actually are. And then, again, my encouragement would be to, as, you know, quickly as possible, transfer. And wondering, if we do any hiring back, are we looking at some of those that unfortunately we had to lay off, to see if there's a possibility? Because, you know, as Richard, I, I never voted for layoffs, I didn't believe in it, I, I thought we could balance this budget without doing it, because I think the unintended loss of revenue, that we may never quantify, is that when you lay someone off, that might be property tax that never gets paid this year. It's also probably sales tax that they're not going to be contributing to, and when people get laid off, their entire life, you know, starts spiraling downward, and so I, you know, I, I think we are suffering because of the revenue that we're not getting in the city, from sales tax, from property tax, from, from the usual means of revenue, so I think laying folks off actually contributes to that, we may, again, never quantify that, but hopefully going forward, maybe some of those folks can get hired back in some of these positions, and my encouragement is to really look at those special funded positions. But I do commend everyone, I know the E-RIP took longer than we thought, which, which unfortunately, was a ding to some of these departments' budgets, but I do commend everyone for transferring as quickly as possible. I know that was a very monumental task, but hopefully we can keep looking at those specially funded positions, because I think that's really a lifeline for some of our employees.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Any other speakers in the council? Mr. Rosendahl.
I want to thank you for everything you're doing, but as we know, going forward, the structural deficit issues, and we're going to discuss it again this afternoon in the committee, about raising the retirement age, raising the contribution commitment to health care, and raising the contribution commitment to pensions. It's an unfortunate state of affairs in the nation right now, in the world, but if we don't deal more effectively with both health care and pensions, we're not going to be able to provide basic services when we get ready for our next fiscal year. But being on the Budget Committee, I don't need to say anything right now, because we've been working with you on what you're doing today, the FSR, but we look forward to this afternoon, a healthy discussion about where do we take our city going forward? Because we can't afford next spring to look at another $300 to $400 million deficit, wring our hands and say, we got a problem, you know, we got to act on it now, we got to act on it in legislative ways, and we got to act on it internally, in coalition negotiation ways. And so, I look forward to us working together on that. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
Okay, this horse is not dead. It's a conversation that we need to have, and the reason is that, at some point, the clock starts over. You can't just say that adding layoffs at this point forward, we get the same benefit as when you calculated that 350, because we're paying those people salaries at this point, through October. So, so the nine-month benefit is less than what it was projected, when you, you said that the 350 was the, the figure that we must lay off. It is true. You do the math. In fact, I'm asking for an analysis of what is the cost-benefit analysis for future layoffs, because that 350 calculation does not work, moving forward.
The reason that's not true is because we didn't expect all of the layoffs to happen on July 1st. The, the plan was that they would happen throughout the year, and so the budget reflected that. And it would be impossible for the Personnel Department to be able to do all of the, all the work that's required to have everyone who's going to be laid off, be laid off in the first quarter, and so the...
Well, I know that, I know that. That's why I thought we were moving forward too fast, without knowing what we were doing. But the point is, that we don't have a cost-benefit analysis for the 374 that have been laid off. We don't know whether it has cost us more money, or whether we've saved money. We do know that we've cut off the services that they were providing. We also don't know whether they're management personnel, whether they're line staff, we don't, we don't know the ramifications of all that. We, we haven't had that report, and so moving forward, we don't know where we are with the 350 figure, in terms of the cost-benefit analysis. So, I would move that, that we get that report back. What, what is the cost-benefit analysis of layoffs from this point moving forward, relative to the 300, the projection, the 350 positions laid off was the break even point? What is the status of, of our layoff program relative to cost savings? And, and where are these layoffs occurring? I think that's the easiest one, is where are these layoffs occurring, because we actually can, can track that with just a, a graph. So, Ms. Hahn seconded, that's my motion, thank you.
Okay, we have the report as amended. There's no objection, that'll be accepted as a friendly amendment. Let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
That brings it, that brings us to item 37, called Special for Cards.
Okay, item 37 is next. We have speakers from the public on item 37. Our first speaker is Ida Tlela. Good morning, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon, anything. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to beg the City Council to deny the rental contract proposed by the Greater Echo Park Alleeian Neighborhood Council. This contract should never have been entertained last year. Why? According to the city plan and done compliance requirements, unless a neighborhood council is in fiscal compliance, and has no outstanding debts, long-term contracts are to be denied. Then, the neighborhood council had not filed several quarterly reports, and owed LAUSD some bank rent for the property. A money that was owed since 2007. Also, the board vote was less than one-third of the board. I really think that this neighborhood council has been written up in the city controller's audit. This space has not functioned well for the neighborhood council or the community, it is still raw and somewhat unfinished, the noise from the street drifts over, and dialogue is constantly interrupted. This, there is also a safety issue and liability issue. The fire extinguisher is used as a doorstop, there are things propped up where children could go in, and things could fall. There is cleaning fluid that is not in shelving, locked shelving. This neighborhood council has violated the Brown Act and other laws. We need to go back to other alternatives.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lala. Matt Dowd is our next speaker, and then we have Lisa Baca.
How many minutes do I have?
You have two minutes, sir.
How many do I have?
You have two, it's a normal, normal item.
No, I mean in total.
Oh, I don't know.
Because I want to say this one other item already...
Looks like three.
Oh, good, perfect, I'll take a minute, thank you. Wow, yes, my ears are deceiving me, I'm hearing complaints about a neighborhood council. Oh my goodness. So, yes, whatever she says sounds fair to me, because that sound like good, fair, public testimony, something the City Council routinely ignores, I'll testify to that. So, thank you, yes, they got problems with this neighborhood council, canceled the lease, everything. They've all got problems, big problems, not as big as yours even, but they're all getting there.
Lisa Baca is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. My name's Lisa Baca, I'm the Chief Information Officer for the Greater Echo Park Alleeian Neighborhood Council. Just for the record, I'd like to make sure that you all know that we are in total compliance with the done, all of our paperwork is in order, and we are very much active with our office. First, I'd like to begin by thanking Bank of America, we are very grateful to them for being our community partner, and also special thanks to CD1 Council Member, Richard Reyes Staffperson, and CD13 Alejandro Marruquin, who we work closely with in our office. In the, in the year since we've had our lease, we opened our offices after renovation February 2010. We have held our committee meetings and our board meetings, saving our budgets, the fees that we normally would have to pay LAUSD for renting their school auditoriums. We've also served the community as a meeting place for the Echo Park Security Association, the Echo Park Education Coalition, the City of Los Angeles Librarian Guild. We staged cleanups from our office, most recently with the September 25th Heal the Bay Community Coastal Cleanup, with 362 volunteers, it was the largest ever for Echo Park. This July, we had a math tutoring program where we were able to, for free, serve over 30 youth. Our office may not be the Taj Mahal, by no means is it perfect, but at $422 a month, or 32 cents a square foot, it is a place where we call our home, and I ask for your support.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. This is one of those experiences where I would hope that within neighborhood council, within their leadership, these differences can be addressed and worked out. We're supporting this effort, the majority of that board voted for this position, we've heard different points of view, in terms of what is going on in that arena, but I'm hoping that, within the different stakeholders, that can continue to work through these issues, and that they can come to a place where they can find options, find a location, if that's the case. Now, this sits right at the border, literally across the street is District 13, this sits right in my district, so it's a very interesting dynamic in watching these different stakeholders emerge. So, I stand to support this effort, and I'm hoping that the body itself, the people that make up the body of the neighborhood council, can come forward with the type of agreements where they can all be satisfied with their decision, but I am following the majority vote in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and I'll coordinate with your staff too, on addressing any of these concerns, and seeing noise in meetings, whether we can help all parties come to some, some way to make sure that those meetings are as, as easy to attend and listen to as well, because I know that's been a concern, and we'll work with neighborhood council and the stakeholders on that too. Any other members wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item 41, called Special for Cards. All right, we have cards on this item. First is Arnold Sacks. Following Mr. Sacks will be Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. The action that you're taking here, after you take jurisdiction, the veto, would be, that you're vetoing the actions taken by the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners. Why, or would that information be available to us? Why are you vetoing their action? And that being said, there have been other items on your agendas where you've asserted jurisdiction, particularly over the Board of DWP, but you've never vetoed their actions? Because that's a proprietary... But you've never vetoed their actions because that's a proprietary department. So, is this one of those situations akin to city council rules where some rules you change, like the rules for decorum that are specifically changed? And the rules of attendance for councilmen are implied but not specifically changed? And there is a general difference between those two actions. So, I'm just curious again. Aye, what gives you the juris, oh, look. Why are you vetoing their actions of the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners? And what is your, what is you, what is your recommendation if you, after the veto? What is the avenue of pursuit that should be taken? Or what is the other option? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Is our last speaker on this item?
Yes. Thank you. Another great triumphant moment. Tom Labonge's baby has to be vetoed. Of course, it's Mark Brown, the attorney. That's why I'm here. If you're wondering, Paul Corretts, he has to, he has to move this with Tom Labonge to get this back off the dumb, stupid Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners, the scourge of the City of Los Angeles, these guys, bow ties and all. Skirt, don't even think about trying to cut me off, Mr. City Attorney. This is my baby. I'm talking about this.
Please address the council. Thank you.
The Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners. You're going to veto their action after you assert jurisdiction. So, I'm allowed to talk about those guys because they made a mistake.
I just said, make sure to address the councils a whole, please. Thank you.
I, I'm trying to address the councils a whole, but none of them are listening. They're all busy in conversations.
I'm listening to you, sir, and we are listening.
All right. Thank you. So, yes, tell Paul Corretts that if he's tired of the public coming and having public comment about stuff like this, maybe you should get your, get your house in order.
Do you have any other comments about this item, sir?
Yeah, I've got a bunch.
Do you want to talk about general public comment? That's for general public comment.
Pause in my thoughts before you interrupt. You tried to do it to Zuma Dog the other day.
Okay, sir. I'm sorry. You're out of order on this item, but thank you for your comments. I recognize Mr. Labonge and then Mr. Reyes.
I want to pass up my time. I'll come back, Mr. Corretts.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just, I would just point out, since the Recreation and Parks Board has withdrawn the item, we don't actually need to go through the process of vetoing and we should receive and file this. But beyond this, this specific item, we do need to come up with a policy to deal with concerns that have been raised, particularly by the city attorney about the potential legal impacts of this upon some of our other signage regulations. So, even though we don't need to deal with, with the item at hand, we clearly do need to deal with the legal questions and the appropriate process for these to be approved.
I believe Mr. Reyes is going to touch on that. Mr. Labonge, you yielded to Mr. Corretts. You still want to go second? You want to go to Mr. Reyes?
Well, I'll let Mr. Reyes go. First district before fourth.
All right. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. Very honored, Councilman Labonge. College, yesterday in Planning Land Use and Management Committee, we essentially gave directives to the city attorney's office to fold in 20 amendments that deals with the sign ordinance and the sign issues. And speaking very general, because we are at the foundation stage, how we move forward and actually take control of this environment in which we can protect our neighborhoods, protect our city, yet be business friendly and understanding that balancing point. So, there are actually 20 amendments that have emerged in the past two years. There have been over 170 signs removed. So, there is a direct correlation between what the courts have dictated, the policy we need to create. I appreciate this being received and filed, but I would hope that in the future, if we do have sign-related directives and or intend to work on signage, that you give me the courtesy to fold that into this process so that we are consistent with the court rulings and that we move forward in a manner that's consistent with the latest judgments and that our policy can stand on strong legal firm ground and we can move forward in establishing a policy that's healthy for the whole city. And I would humbly request if you can work with us so that we can stay strong, given the rulings that we've just had in the recent few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
His action was to stop Recreation and Parks from not having a firm view of just what you asked for, Ed. And I think that's what will help here. I, I know we have these public-private partnerships that are real important and we have foundations, whether it's the Library Foundation or Cultural Affairs or Recreation and Parks, they make partnerships, but if it doesn't fit within the law, they're not exempt from the law. But we all know, and I believe Mr. Etchavaria clarified, that the Little League Field can't have a Ballard Hardware Store or Johnson Fishing and Bait or whatever would be on the outfield in a banner, but what is appropriate for a park has to be discussed. As chairman of the Arts and Parks Committee, Mr. President and members, we're going to have a discussion on those things so we don't go down this path again, so that we make sure, whatever we do, the county of Los Angeles, at their lifeguard towers, they do advertise to help pay for the cost of things. But I believe we have to look at what the balance is and make sure we don't misstep anything what our city attorney presently has been doing to correct the issues of signage in our city. But support and relationships are key to extend the service that is necessary. So, this has been received and filed. It's been removed from action by their commission, so it's mute at this time, but in the coming months, we will have a discussion which will also extend to not just neighborhood councils but also the park advisory boards and other groups, library friends of, to get their input as well and come back with something that works for everybody. I thank everybody for their efforts on this and I thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you. Next in the lineup is Mr. Rosenthal and then Mr. Corrigan.
Yes, just a quick comment and I'm delighted to hear Mr. Reyes and how the land use committee is moving on this issue. I strongly believe that we should find a way to do the public-private partnership on some of the stuff. I'm not for billboards blasting out, obviously, but naming rights might have some validity for the partnership with private sector to keep our parks open and to keep our libraries going because that's one of the creative thinkings we have to have going forward is the public-private partnership. So, I'm delighted with your leadership on it and, of course, the motion brings the issue to the forefront, which needs to be brought to the forefront. For instance, on Venice Beach, I don't want to say we should do it or not do it at this point, but I've had a lot of people about the skateboard park we have there get excited about potentially naming it the Something Skateboard Park. Well, if somebody were to name it that, it'd be a lot of money I'd certainly want for Venice Beach and for situations like that. I'm not saying that's, that's for sure or anything like that. But if we look at public-private partnership, that's the creative angle, Mr. President, we have to look at as a city as we continue to have this tremendous budget crisis going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Corrigan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my points have been made by the prior speakers, but I just wanted to reinforce what Councilmember Rosenthal has said about encouraging the creativity of our departments to try to find new opportunities to, to support services to our constituents and to generate revenues. At the same time though, I think Mr. Reyes's point is not just about courtesy. It's absolutely imperative that all of our departments, as well as all members, understand that we need to coordinate this effort and speak with a single voice because as we take some actions in one place, it will certainly have legal ramifications in others that will be unanticipated unless we coordinate this, unless we consider these steps through the Plumb Committee and, and with the advice of our city attorney. So, it's just, it is important that we not stifle creativity, that we continue to encourage our departments to look for new ways to do this, but they have to do it in a way that's consistent with our overall legal strategy dealing with advertising and billboards and the other, the, the First Amendment ramifications that come from public forums and all the other issues that impact on this city.
Mr. Tom Labonge.
Just in all of that, we are going to ask, and I already have asked Mr. Etchavaria, draft the appropriate motion that would have a, what was a robust discussion on these issues at arts and parks and obviously make sure it gets to the planning and land use as whatever the trail is. But partnerships are important, but how we do everything is equally as important, if not more. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The motion is to receive and file. Without objection, we will receive and file that. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Let's refer those and also post them.
Very good. There are excuses on the desk. All right. Councilmember Zion requests to arrive at 11:30 on November 5 for city business. That meets council policy.
So, it sounds like a good excuse?
And.
Next one.
Councilmember Perry requests to leave at 11:30 on November 19 and 24 for city business. That also meets council policy.
She is excused.
The desk is clear.
All right. Announcements, colleagues? We, just one note, we will have our Rules and Elections Committee at 2 PM, sorry, 3 PM, excuse me, and it's going to be here in chambers. Don't, don't show up at 2 unless you're with a police protective leave, then it'll be at 2 o'clock. But 3 o'clock, we will be having our Rules and Elections Committee and I know that many of you have put motions forward for the March ballot, so please feel free to come by and to speak on your motions. We have, I believe, between this week and next week, over 20 proposed items for the March ballot. I don't predict all 20 will be there, but I do think we want to consolidate smartly. We want to see which ones are ready to go and please feel free to stop by. Ms. Perry and I have a joint meeting next week on Wednesday at 2 PM and then, that's also 3? We announced it as 2 the other night. That's also 3 PM. So, both 3 PM meetings for Rules and Elections this week and next week, Wednesday, here in chambers on the March ballot initiative. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's Purple Day, folks, and let me give you a little history of Purple Day. You see the gay flag? This is something that was created in 1978 since, you know, gay people are the whole rainbow of society and the world and you can see the purple down here. Why do we call today Purple Day? And you can see I have my purple jacket on and my purple tie. The idea, it's called What is Spirit Day? The, the idea behind Spirit Day, first created by a teenager named Brittany McMillan earlier this month, is a simple one, not dissimilar to the idea of Spirit Week held in many high schools and can be summed up in three words. Everyone rally together. Spirit Day honors the teenagers who have taken their own lives in recent weeks, but just as important, it is also a way to show the hundreds of thousands of LGBT youth who face the same pressures and bullying that there is a vast community of people who support them. Purple symbolizes spirit on the rainbow flag, a symbol from the LGBT pride that was created by Gilbert Baker in 1978. As one of the events Facebook pages says, and Eric and I were talking about Facebook, I mean, Facebook has connected the kids. They're all connected on this today. This event is not a seminar, nor is it a rally. There is no meeting place. All you have to do is wear purple today. Wearing purple on October 20th is a simple way to show the world that you stand by those courageous young people and a simple way to stand up to the bullies. Remember, those lives were tragically lost and show your solidarity with those who are still fighting. So, go purple today. And frankly, on a more personal note, I can tell you of a lot of young people I know that still struggle with it at home. There are some parents in some cultures that truly want to kill their children or find a way to kill them because to be gay is not considered normal or healthy and is considered degenerate and sinful. Hopefully, this world will grow up as time goes on and realize that God created nature and homosexuality is an expression of nature and God makes no mistake. So, I get personally offended all the time, as you can imagine, as a 65-year-old gay guy, that I'm not as equal as the rest of you guys and ladies around this horseshoe. I can't do the inheritance bet. I can't do the IRS bit because of the word marriage is codified in Washington in a thousand different ways. And so, you know, basic human and civil rights is what we fight for and for the young people. God bless you all and let's all appreciate each other as God's children and human beings. Thank.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Mr. Zion.
Yes, I just want to announce that tomorrow, 11:30 in Warner Center at the Marriott Hotel, Grateful Hearts, the LA Fire Department, LA Police Department have a fundraising event. All the food vendors in Warner Center come out and you can get your lunch there. So, we invite all the folks from the valley to come out. Again, it's called Grateful Hearts. It's on Oxnard, adjacent to the Marriott Hotel. The road will be blocked off. There'll be demonstration by the Fire Department, Police Department. The funds go to assist the Fire Department and the Police Department in equipment and supplies that they can't get from the city resources. So, tomorrow, 11:30, come out for lunch, Grateful Hearts in front of the Marriott Hotel, Oxnard, Topanga Canyon, San Fernando Valley. Rain or shine, be there.
Thank you. Other announcements? Yes, Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Smith.
Mr. President, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Los Angeles Philharmonic and Ola, an organization in Westlake. We had Gustavo DuRamal to the center and they passed out brand new violins to many of the children in Westlake. They have formed an orchestra and these are kids who come from the neighborhood who are just amazed at the gift of music and to have the conductor there from Caracas and comes from a movement that speaks to how you instill this magic we call music into our neighborhoods in such a profound way. I just want to thank them for the smiles and, and the great environment they've created for young people who are going to learn from this and I thank the conductor and the Alfred Philharmonic for the hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We adjourned yesterday in honor of Charlie Beck's mother who passed away a week ago. I have confirmed from the Police Department that anyone wishing to give condolences and remembrance of the chief's mother may do so by giving donations rather than flowers to the Los Angeles Police Department Memorial Fund.
We were going to try to do something collectively as council, so we'll contact the office, council leadership, and ask folks for a like donation from all offices for Chief Beck and for the family and we'll make sure it's, it's done in everybody's name. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Other announcements, Mr. Parks?
Invite the public, we have a very important meeting at Second AME Church tomorrow, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That's dealing with the Los Angeles Regional Homeless Restoration Coalition. We'll be meeting there and having a variety of discussions about homelessness. And that's, starts at 9, ends at 3 and that's 5500 South Hoover Boulevard, I'm sorry, Hoover Avenue.
Are there any other regular announcements? If not, I guess, Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to invite the public on Sunday morning at, beginning at 10:00 AM. I'll be conducting the second of my neighborhood council town hall meetings about the future of neighborhood empowerment. This will be taking place at the, at US, on the USC campus at the Galen Center in the Founder's Room and the public is invited to attend that. And also, just a reminder that on Friday morning, the President of the United States will be in Los Angeles and visiting USC, so people should plan their Friday morning commutes accordingly because invariably there will be some disruptions to the flow of traffic as well on Friday morning.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, if I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for our adjourning Thank you, Mr. Alaco.
Members, council members, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Dolores Gonzalez Calderon Estrada, aged 86, passed away from natural causes surrounded by her loved family member. Dolores was the mother to my former field deputy, Ramiro Estrada, and she was born on April 11, 1924 in Hacienda La Estanzuela, Jalisco, Mexico, to the inicio Gonzalez and Maria Calderon. In 1945, she married Abraham Estrada. They had seven daughters and four sons. In 1972, Dolores and Abraham moved their family to San Fernando. She worked at the Price Fister plant for 20 years as a machine operator. In 1995, she became an American citizen and although limited in her English skills, she was responsible, she was a responsible citizen and eager to exercise her right to vote. Doña Lola was best known Doña Lola was best known for her tenacity, her unwavering faith, her pozole, her refried beans, and her enduring love for her family and friends. Her insistence on education led her children to reach their goals as teachers, biochemists, public accountants, and court translators. She leaves behind her daughters Socorro, Emma, Dolores, Celia, Patricia, Erandira, and Socil, and sons Felipe, Ramiro, Mario, and Abraham Junior, thirty-two grandchildren, twenty great-grandchildren. She was a great-grandmother, a great-mother, a great-grandmother, and will truly be missed. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alaco. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Connor Lynch. Connor was a sixteen-year-old junior who attended Notre Dame High School in Sherman Oaks. He tragically lost his life yesterday afternoon due to being struck by a sports utility vehicle in a hit-and-run incident when he was crossing Woodman Avenue. The driver was later apprehended by LAPD officers. We join Connor's friends, family, and school community in mourning for him. Connor was a great, bright young man, a very responsible and dutiful person who was a confident student with an inquiring mind and who had worlds of potential. He loved sports, and he was on his way to cross-country practice yesterday when the horrible tragedy occurred. He leaves his loving parents and two devoted brothers and many friends. We offer our heartfelt condolences to his family, loved ones, and classmates.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions, Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Councilmembers. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Susan Christine Delmonte, known to many of her friends and colleagues as Heather Delmonte, passed away on Monday, October eleventh. Heather was a twenty-five-year employee of the City of Los Angeles, retired from the Department of City Planning in two thousand and five, following a diagnosis of breast cancer. She valiant endured five years of treatment, including participation in a clinical trial. Heather was born in Placentia, California, but lived in Los Angeles since the nineteen-seventies, when she moved here to attend UCLA with her undergraduate degree in philosophy. Heather started her career in City Hall in nineteen eighty, worked in the office of Councilmember Joe Wax. There she worked on a range of policy issues, including land use, transportation, housing, arts, parks, water quality, hazardous waste, and senior services. Her two proudest accomplishments, however, were her efforts resulting in city legislation and acting the nation's first anti-discrimination ordinance, protecting the privacy and careers of city residents with HIV or AIDS. She was also indispensable in preparing the city's first rent stabilization ordinance, which passed in nineteen eighty-eight, was a critical liaison between the council district and the Hollywood area, following the nineteen ninety-four earthquake reconstruction programs. In nineteen ninety-five, she joined the office of Jackie Goldberg in the thirteenth district. As an M.T. watchdog for City Thirteen, she focused on subway construction. She helped secure federal and state grants to prepare land use plans for eight subway stations, areas in Hollywood plans, that subsequently won an American Planning Association Award for Excellence. In two thousand, when Councilman Goldberg was elected to state office, Heather transferred to the City Planning Department as a planning assistant. She worked in the code studies and case management units and briefly in the Division of Land. Her family, friends, professional cohorts, and those constituents for whom she advocated so passionately thank her for dedication, character, and we profoundly miss her.
Thank you. I'd like to, yeah, I'll do all members on that. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. LaBange.
I remember her as staff here in City Hall, how dedicated she was and how committed she was, and it's a tragedy to learn of her passing.
Thank you. Mr. Zion?
Mr. President, Mr. Smith joins me in this. I also want to go second. I'm the youngster from Notre Dame High, also graduated Notre Dame High School in the Valley. This adjourning motion is for Joshua Cullens, passed away October nineteenth. Marine Staff Sergeant Joshua Cullens, born in Simi Valley, March twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-two, attended Royal High School in Simi Valley, graduated in the year two thousand. Shortly after graduation, joined the United States Marine Corps. Served First Marine Logistics Group, First Explosive Ordinance Disposal Company, Third Battalion, Sixth Marine Regiment, and Marji Afghanistan. Joined the Los Angeles Police Department July twenty-first, two thousand and eight. Began his career at Topanga Area Police Station after completing his probation, transferred to Central Division. An officer for a year and a half before his Marine status was activated, returned to active duty. July sixteenth, twenty-ten, was injured when a fifteen-pound roadside bomb detonated in his vicinity, suffered a concussion in that blast. This past Monday, died from injuries caused by another roadside bomb. He was due to return to Los Angeles Police Department as a police officer August twenty-eleven. Main hobby was riding his Yamaha dirt bike, also enjoyed paintballing, snowboarding, and skiing. Loved nothing more than spending time with his family when he was home, mostly loved being a big brother and role model to his two younger brothers, Cooper and Donovan. Passed away early Tuesday morning, October nineteenth, while proudly serving our country in a combat tour in Afghanistan. This is the second LAPD officer die in line of duty while serving our country in Afghanistan. And he was deployed two previous tours to Iraq, survived by his parents Jim and Barbara, two brothers Cooper and Donovan. And of note, his dad, Jim, is the owner of Abe's Deli in Northridge, a restaurant in Councilman Smith's district, so I've enjoyed dinner on a number of occasions, and he was a brave soldier. He told his dad, "Dad, remember this. If I get hurt, it's not your fault. I got into this by myself." May he rest in peace.
We'll put all members on that, and as we remember him, we also remember those who are fighting right now, who are LAPD and LAFD and other city employees who are deployed right now in Afghanistan, some still in Iraq and the Horn of Africa and throughout the world, and may they come home safe. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll. This meeting of the Los...